Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. O'Carroll is absent. Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Chair Carlson?
Yes.
So moved.
Do we have any motions coming out of closed meeting?
Yes, I have one motion. I move that ACPS provide notice to the Piedmont Regional Education Program Joint Border Control by June 30th, 2023, that we are terminating the lease and the operating agreement for the Ivy Creek School on June 30th, 2025.
Second?
All those in favor? Actually, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Do we have another motion from Ms. Osborne?
Yes. I move to direct staff to enter negotiations for the architect selection for the Southern Feeder Pattern Elementary School in the order presented.
Second?
Motion by Ms. Osborne and seconded by Ms. Lee will say on that one. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we hear no opposition. That passes. We have a third motion from Dr. Acuff.
I move to direct staff to proceed with design for the high school center two on the Lamb's Lane campus.
Do we have a second? Second. Okay, moved by Dr. Acuff, seconded by Ms. Osborne. Any discussion? Okay. Would you like a roll call vote?
We can go with the right one.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moved and passed. And we have one last motion coming out of closed meeting from Dr. Berlin.
I have one motion in two parts. I move that we appoint candidate A to position A and candidate B to position B. I also move that we appoint administrators as presented to us.
Second?
Okay, moved by Dr. Berlin, seconded by Dr. Acuff. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. That brings us to our regular agenda. So the first thing we'll have is a call to order where we do a roll call of who's present and we'll start with you, Claire. Sorry.
Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Excuse me, thank you. Anthony Basut, filling in for Rosholden Schools Council.
Rebecca Berlin Whitehall.
Kaye Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Judy Lee Ryvanna District.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Graham Page, Samuel Millet District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Sanuthi Amrasingha, Student Representative.
Wei Ningding, Student Representative.
Matthew Haas, Superintendent.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Great. Now we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it seems one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is item 2.5, which is a moment of silence. I do want to take a moment and dedicate this moment of silence to an employee who unfortunately is no longer with us. That would be Avis Key Morse. I'll read a quick, or I'll read a bio. Avis Key Morse was a budget grant analyst in our Fiscal Services Department and he unfortunately passed away last week. A lifelong resident of Charlottesville and the Charlottesville area, Avis began working for ACPS on August 20th, 1997 at Albemarle High School. A highly effective office support staff member, Avis put others first, especially children and their families. During her time, sorry, I said he earlier after I said, I was like, wait a minute. During her time with ACPS, Avis worked at Albemarle High School, Western Albemarle High School, Brownsville Elementary School, and Fiscal Services. A constant learner, Avis started as an Office Associate Two and was promoted steadily, eventually arriving at Management Analyst Two position. I will say, in reflecting on our experiences with Avis, Brownsville Principal Jason Crutchfield said that Avis was a committed member to our staff, supporting teachers and students. And as a parent, my children, so speaking as if I were him, benefited from her dedicated service at WAHS where student, staff, and community members were blessed to see her smile every day. So I would like to dedicate this moment of silence to Avis and we can do that now. And I will note that her service is tomorrow, so if you want details, feel free to email if you would like to attend her service. After that will be our spotlight on education and the reason I think probably many of you guys are here tonight. It will, it's after those opening. It's our retiree recognition and why we have all those cupcakes out there and I'm very excited about that. I believe Dan Redding is going to step up to. Okay, Ms. Kaiser is going to do it.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight is a bittersweet moment. We have in front of us tonight representatives of our 71 Albemarle County Public Schools employees who are retiring as we close out this school year. The people, the employees are just tremendous assets to our students and to our colleagues and our schools and every part of who we are as Albemarle County Public Schools. You really represent the mission, whether you are retiring after a fairly short service with us or if you are a person who is 40-plus years with us. From the very bottom of our hearts, we thank you for everything that you have done every single day of your career with us. Our students thank you and on behalf of all of us on the leadership of Albemarle County Schools, we very much appreciate your dedication to our students. As we, we're going to go through a slideshow momentarily and what we're going to do is we are going to call each person by name. We do invite our retirees to come up and shake the hands. If you could start over with Dr. Haas and work your way around and then Mr. Redding will have a little gift that is just a token of our appreciation for what you have done during your time here. Betsy Agee, Crowsey Elementary School. Cindy Anderson, Stone Robinson Elementary.
Cindy Anderson.
And thank you all for holding applause until the end.
Thank you, Cindy. It's been great.
Hannah Bailey, Stone Robinson Elementary.
She doesn't want it.
Tanya Bauer, Special Ed Department. Teresa Bibb, Special Ed Department. Kim Branham, Human Resources. Sunny Byers, Transportation. Elizabeth Cook, Mary Webber Lewis Elementary. Jeanne D'Antoni, Greer Elementary. Elizabeth Bonneville, Blue Ridge Juvenile Detention Center. Frederico Dusard Garnier, Woodbrook Elementary. Elizabeth Evans, Lakeside Middle. Ann Fox, Agner Hert Elementary School. Gary Gibson, Department of Technology. Dinica Gumm, Lakeside Middle. Diane Harrison, Special Ed Department. Kim Hermesmeyer, Mountain View Elementary. Kelly Huffman, Woodbrook Elementary. Louise Hyde, Brownsville Elementary School. Walter Lewis Jordan, Department of Transportation. Beth Keith, Mountain View Elementary. Charles Key, Building Services. Janet King, Murray Elementary School. Vicki King, Child Nutrition. Denise Laham, Broadus Wood Elementary. Andre Lewis, Building Services. Donna Lowery, Department of Transportation. Paige Marsh, Department of Child Nutrition. Randall Marshall, Building Services. Jenny Martin, Special Education. Marisol Martinez, Mountain View Elementary. Gilbert Martin, Building Services. Melissa McReynolds, Baker Butler Elementary School. Teresa Madolo, Albemarle High School. Gloria Oliver, Special Education. Neil Plum, Walton Middle School. Lisa Porter, Western Albemarle High School. Pam Powell, Human Resources. Lorelei Pulliam, Woodbrook Elementary School. Ed Redman, Western Albemarle High School. Susan Roichling, Woodbrook Elementary School. Rebecca Rousher, Brownsville Elementary. Sally Sarah Saff, Red Hill Elementary. Carrie Schaefer, Albemarle High School. Jana Shiflett, Department of Transportation. Kathleen Shoup, Baker Butler Elementary. Virginia Smith, EDEP. Pam Snyder, Building Services. Tracy Sofa, Albemarle High School. Eve Solomon, Red Hill Elementary School. Art Stowe, Scottsville Elementary School. Carrie Taylor, Western Albemarle High School. Ted Thill, Albemarle High School. Beverly Upton, Department of Transportation. Rick Verhobek, Human Resources. Shirley Waldo, Lakeside Middle. David Waters, Monticello High School. Marie Willis, Scottsville Elementary. Karen Wood, Child Nutrition. And Donna Lisa Wright, Lakeside Middle. Again, our heartfelt congratulations to these wonderful, wonderful educators. So before you exit, which I promise you I'll let you exit, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting, but I do just want to take a quick second to have some comments from the board members. I will kick it off, give time, people some time to think of things if they want to say them. I will just say, I don't consider myself an emotional person and it was, it brings me to tears to see you guys here because you have spent so much time with our students. And we were just in a conversation in closed meeting talking about how important it is to keep people in the field because when you stay in the field, our students get so much, such a better experience having people who are dedicated to the profession. And this one's a particularly hard one. I don't want to say it's my kids, but at this point, my kid's first grade teacher, retired after the first grade year, second grade teacher, Ms. Box retire, is retiring this year, kindergarten teacher, first grade and second grade for my other child. So if you have my kid, you're going to retire the next year is what I've learned. And I'm just, I can't convey it in words. I know I'm not being very eloquent, but you have done so much for our community, our families, my kids, and just thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments?
It's hard to beat that, Katrina. I would just echo that.
Right, I just agree with Ms. Carlson. And if any of you would like to come back and drive buses for us, the door is open. So be aware of that.
Or substitute.
Right, okay.
I was just going to say, we do want to thank you. I also want to recognize and thank our Human Resources staff for putting this together tonight. And again, you all are welcome to stay for the board meeting, but also if you would like to exit, this would be a great time.
We will give a moment so that you can make your way out if you would like.
I didn't expect you to get all chubbed. I get chubbed up easily. Yes, this is the Debbie thing. Just tell me when to go and I'll do it.
Let me see what you got. Trying to keep track. Hey, Katrina?
Yeah?
She, did she do anything? Phil gave her this about retirees.
So then yes.
I think we're done.
We also have.
This is the second one. Yeah, so we asked in closed meeting and I guess.
No, it's completely fine.
Yes, and then you were supposed to introduce Dan Redding.
Sorry. And I, right, I asked, I was like, is she moving?
Yeah, sorry.
So will I just drop? Okay.
She did have her. We are moving on now to item 3.0, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve tonight's agenda.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The agenda is approved. Item 4.0, approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Moved by Mr. Page, seconded by Ms. Lee. Do we have any discussion or any items to pull?
The only question I have is, how long are we going to continue to do COVID-19 status updates, knowing that we're out of, COVID is still occurring, but we're out of the emergency period, just knowing that it does take time?
Look at Pat running up here.
Big smile.
Let me tell you how I feel about that.
I'm happy to say this is the last COVID-19 update we will have since March of 2019.
2020.
They conclude tonight.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you for keeping us safe and keeping us updated. Appreciate that.
Awesome. Any other discussion points, questions? Okay, we have a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. There are no items pulled. That brings us to announcements. I will apologize to Sanuthi because I just steamrolled over her announcement that she had for the first spotlight on education and now we are in a spotlight of education two and that will be kicked off by Dr. Acuff.
Well, we've just honored all of our retirees, but we're going to honor another one now. Whereas more than 100 years ago, President Theodore Roosevelt reminded us that it's not the critic who counts, but rather the person who is actually in the arena, who strives valiantly, who knows great enthusiasms and great devotion, who spends themselves in a worthy cause, and who at best knows the triumph of high achievement and at the worst fails while daring greatly. And whereas the former president was speaking broadly of citizenship, these stern words also speak to us about leadership in vital public endeavors. And whereas among such endeavors is the care and nurturing of a community's most cherished treasures is children and hope within every child and the hope within every child to fulfill their highest ambitions. And whereas there can be no greater path to the success than that which is paved with exceptional and equitable educational opportunities that enable every person to reach their highest potential for greatness. And whereas transformational educational opportunities only are made possible by the supremely talented, dedicated, and influential professionals. And whereas just such a professional joined Albemarle County Public Schools 40 years ago as a math teacher at Henley Middle School, and whereas this educator immediately demonstrated the ability to make all of those around her lifelong learners and practitioners at the highest levels. And whereas while this instinctive leader sought not the spotlight, but instead was illuminated by her accomplishments, and whereas these included a nationally renowned instructional coaching program now duplicated in school divisions across the country. And whereas this program has produced 10 current principals, seven current assistant principals, and one center director. And whereas in 2016, she was named the Curriculum Leader of the Year for the State of Virginia for her proactive and innovative educational policies and programs that ensure learning for all. And whereas during her service as teacher, principal, executive director of K-12 education, assistant, and then deputy superintendent, Albemarle County Public School students earned among the highest on-time graduation rates in the state and nation. And whereas she continues even to this day to ask the toughest questions, insist upon the most exhaustive research and evidence-based practices, and to inspire continuous improvement, now therefore be it resolved that this Albemarle County School Board recognize, congratulate, and celebrate Deborah Collins for her innumerable contributions to the lives and well-being of those who have educated and have been educated in this school division. And be it further resolved that this board expresses its deepest wishes to Debbie, Roger, and their wonderful extended family for limitless happiness, well-being, and fulfillment throughout the next important phase of their lives together. Deborah, can you come up?
the students and the teachers and principals and administrators at Albemarle County Public Schools. Thank you for the opportunity.
It is just a bittersweet day today, but I am so happy for all the retirees. Oh, we also have a letter for you, Debbie. We'll pass it over. Resolution, the resolution. I have one additional spotlight or announcement to make and that is for our wonderful student rep, Sanuthi. So Sanuthi, I'm going to read a letter that we wrote for you. Dear Sanuthi, congratulations to the longest-serving student representative on the Albemarle County School Board. It was a pleasure these six months to count you as a valued colleague and more important, it was extraordinarily helpful to have you broaden our understanding of student needs and perspectives. And I think, getting off script here, but I think we can all attest to having listened to your insightful commentary during numerous work sessions and that you're never afraid to speak up. So thank you. When our board established the position of student representative in December of 2019, our objective was to create a direct link between students and the elected body that governs their learning experience. We also wanted to provide a rewarding opportunity for a dedicated, thoughtful, public service-oriented student leader. We wanted to expand opportunities for students to learn more about representative government and to enhance our decisions relevant to the best academic, social, and emotional interests of all students. You easily proved to be an ideal selection for this role. This does not, of course, come as a surprise. As an example of your influence, we got a glimpse of your leadership skills from the television news coverage of the Solar Kiln Student Project at Community Lab School. School administrators and staff describe you as being instrumental in making this innovative environmental system. and staff describe you as being instrumental in making this innovative environmental success story possible. Even more impressive than your collaboration skills is the way in which you often take a step back to allow other classmates to showcase their talents. As you complete your junior year, please accept our heartfelt gratitude for the contributions you made to our deliberations over the past six months. We hope you will not hesitate to share your insight with us during the next school year on significant issues and opportunities impacting students. You can always come up and give public comment and come say hi. And then we offer our best wishes for a healthy, happy, and rewarding summer and an exceptional senior year, and we will see you at your graduation next year. Thank you. And I want to take the moment to just recognize that we have another student next to Sanuthi. Waning Ding, please correct me if I'm mispronouncing that?
Uh, it's Waning Ding.
Waning Ding. And she is our alternate who, because we extended the length, unfortunately the length that our student representatives served to allow them to have more impact, you did not get to be at as many meetings, but we are hoping now that you will be with us. Is it for three meetings? Awesome. And we saw you graduate. I remember your name being called, because I even to this day, and I read a lot of things, remember your application for student board, or student school rep, because it was very impressive. So, we're excited to have you here. Please feel free to speak up about whatever you would like.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, so, I know we've had a lot of preliminary matters say this, why I have so many papers randomly floating around. Now, we brings us to school board superintendent business, and I believe we have one more piece coming from Mr. Erizari. Dr. Erizari. There's so many doctors around me, it's hard to keep track of, you know, who's.
Good afternoon, School Board, Board Chair, Dr. Haas. Congratulations to our student reps. Yesterday evening, the Albemarle Board of Supervisors passed two important proclamations that I'm asking the board to recognize tonight. First one is the proclamation celebrating Juneteenth. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, more than two years after the emancipation proclamation was signed to free all enslaved people, enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas were finally told that they were free from the bondage of slavery and were for the first time recognized as citizens of our nation. And whereas Black Americans came to commemorate this day as Juneteenth with celebrations across the country, building new lives and a new tradition that we honor today. And whereas the Board of Supervisors recognizes the cultural and historical significance of emancipation and the universally cherished values of liberty and justice. And whereas the county of Albemarle, in keeping with the core principles of the United States of America, believes that all persons are created equal and possess the unalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, now therefore it will be proclaimed that we, the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors, do hereby recognize June 19th, 2023 as Juneteenth to celebrate the freedom and centuries of struggle and progress for civil rights, and to commit towards the ensuring an equitable and inclusive community for all. And I think locally it's important to note that while liberation came to Charlottesville with the arrival of the Union troops on March 3rd, 1865, for many enslaved people in our area, including at the University of Virginia, emancipation would not come until the end of the Civil War in April, 1865.
I move that we adopt that resolution.
I second.
Do we adopt it, or do we endorse it?
I think either is fine. I think it's fine to adopt. We can just make a motion to adopt. All those in favor of adopting?
Aye.
Aye.
And I do encourage everyone to celebrate with our community, Juneteenth Day. Celebrations at Jeff School will be from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. on June 17th, including parade, concerts, and more. Also, on Saturday, June 24th, Preservation Piedmont Organization is sponsoring a tour to learn more about the African-American history in Scotts, in our Scottsville community. And also on Sunday, June 25th, at Simpson Park, the Albemarle County Parks and Rec Division and the Office of Equity and Inclusion are sponsoring a Sunday brunch to celebrate the contributions of Mr. James Elias Simpson, the park's namesake. There was also another important proclamation for June. It was the proclamation celebrating LGBTQ Pride Month. Whereas Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month, LGBTQ Pride Month, is celebrated annually in June to commemorate the catalyst event of the 1969 Stonewall Riots, and works to achieve equal justice and equal opportunity for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning Americans. And whereas on April 11th, 2020, the Virginia Values Act was signed into law, making Virginia the first state in the South to protect LGBTQ people from discrimination in their daily lives, including discrimination in housing, public and private employment, public accommodations, and access to credit. And whereas Albemarle County's stated mission is to enhance the well-being and quality of life for all citizens through the provision of the highest level of public service consistent with the prudent use of public funds. And whereas the Board of Supervisors is committed to supporting through its actions and its partnerships, the promotion of equitable and inclusive Albemarle County that allows all members of our community to grow and thrive. And whereas LGBTQ individuals have shaped, advanced, and enriched the fabric of Albemarle County and our nation by making immense contributions to all areas of life, including government, business, arts, and sciences, medicine, law enforcement, technology, and military. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors, continue to affirm our commitment to our stated mission to enhance the well-being and quality of life of all members of our community, and recognize with pride the rich cultural diversity and contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer, and questioning residents to live in a vibrant Albemarle County. I believe Pride Month helps raise awareness about the ongoing challenges faced by LGBTQ individuals, and to celebrate the humanity accomplishments of our LGBTQ individuals. It is a time to advocate for equal rights, combat discrimination, promote the understanding and acceptance, and celebrate the excellence and accomplishments of the LGBTQ plus community. Through various events and initiatives, Pride Month fosters dialogue, educates the public, and encourages allies to show support for LGBTQ rights. Pride Month is also crucial for supporting LGBTQ plus youth who may be struggling with their identity or facing social stigma. It sends a powerful message of acceptance and provides a safe space for our young people to explore their sexual orientation or gender identity and/or expression. Visibility, positive representation, and affirmation during Pride significantly impacts the mental health and well-being of our LGBTQ plus youth. We want ACPS to be a place where we celebrate and value our LGBTQ plus staff, students, and community, and encourage them to be open about their identities and allowed to be their true authentic selves.
You got a lot of reading to do.
That was a lot of reading.
You handled it well.
Thank you.
So I guess we should follow the same protocol for that one. Do we have a motion to approve that resolution? There's a resolution. It's crafted a resolution. Yeah, okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve that resolution.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just had just a couple of announcements real quick. First, I want to congratulate all of our retirees again. Want to remind everyone that the last day of school is tomorrow, so for school board members, if you did want to get out and see students at school tomorrow, would be your last chance. It is a half-day. Hoping that the smoke will clear up a bit. We, a lot of field days are tomorrow, so if everybody could just send out positive feelings about changing the weather pattern, that would be great for the kids, so they could have a great last day of school. Monday is the last day of school for teachers and other 10-month employees, and then we start our Curriculum Assessment Instruction Institute at Southern, at Lakeside Middle School, beginning on Tuesday. For board members that would like to attend that and check in with the teachers there, maybe come by for lunch. I know they would appreciate seeing you. I do want to congratulate our 1,098 graduates who have graduated from the lab school, also from Almaw High School, Western Almaw, Monticello, and then we also had one graduate from the Virginia Institute of Autism. And then we had six post-graduates from Post High. Several board members attended that event. And I really want to, I really just want to take a moment to thank our board members for attending graduations. I know that's a big time commitment, and it means a lot to all the kids and their parents, the community, as well as staff to see you there. And I just want to thank all of our staff in the schools. The success of our graduates is brought about by every adult in our system who took time to know each student, provide the academic, physical, and/or social, emotional support to the student that's needed to be engaged and successful, and who held each accountable for high expectations. Thank you all from pre-kindergarten to EDEP, elementary, middle, and high school educators, assistants, office associates, nurses, and specialists, all bus drivers, building services staff, child nutrition staff, central office and technology staff, school and district administrators, and supervisors. Thank you on behalf of our community. Those are my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you for those announcements, Dr. Haas. Are there any other school board or business announcements?
I want to tell you I had a great visit to the EDEP program at Mountain View yesterday. I don't know if any of you have visited that program. It's great. You should try it next year.
Awesome. Any other?
Very active.
Is that where you sent the photo from?
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, well then that, Ellen, actually, or Ms. Osborne, that brings us to you, because item eight is public comment, and I believe you are doing it tonight.
All right. So we invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to school board governance, and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willingly disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Individuals and/or organizations wishing to speak during public comment must sign in with a clerk. Sign-up is available online beginning at 9:00 on the Monday of the meeting week until 3:30 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Please adhere to the following protocol. State your name and address or your voting district. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. Give written statements and other supporting material to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to school board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A commenter will be required to discontinue the comments after three minutes. A color-coded light system is used to time presentations. The yellow light means the speaker is two minutes, or one minute if there are more than 10 speakers, into the presentation, and the red light means the speaker is at the three-minute limit of the presentation and must wrap up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other audible form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. When multiple comments on the same topic have been presented, the chair may request additional comments on the topic be limited to those who have new information to present. Debate and dialogue with the school board are not allowed. Use of the projection system is reserved for staff-scheduled agenda item presentations only. Tonight, we have five speakers, four in-person and one on Zoom. We will do the Zoom one last, Ms. Thompson. This is the order in which you will go. Ms. Christine Putnam, Ms. Allison Spillman, Ms. Heidi Gilman Bennett, and Ms. Mary McIntyre, and then our Zoom will be Marie Scott. Okay, Ms. Putnam, please join us.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Christine Putnam, and I live in the Scottsville Magisterial District. I'm a retired science teacher, a master gardener, and I also serve on the SWAC Committee. We just finished up. And I was appointed to the ACES Committee. I have had the pleasure of volunteering in four of our county elementary schools, where I was invited to give lessons on the importance of keeping food waste out of the landfill. Composting food waste is an important climate action step. It protects our water resources. It helps build healthy soils. And I want to recognize the teachers, teaching assistants, custodians, and students at Greer Elementary School, Murray Elementary School, Mountain View, and Holly Mead Elementary School. All of those individuals who said yes to taking this important action step. And I also want to thank Alamo County Public Schools for supporting composting through a contract with Black Bear Composting. But there is much more that can and should be done to reduce food waste and to keep organics out of the landfill. Here is a short list of further actions I recommend to reduce food waste and expand composting in our schools, many of which will require the support of child nutrition services for implementation. So I'm hoping that in the future that we'll be using washable trays and utensils rather than disposable ones, implementing and using shared tables to keep unopened packaged food out of the trash, and put those items into the hands of hungry students. Donate unused food to local food banks, and provide a stipend for environmental champions at every school to help organize and oversee composting and recycling efforts. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Allison Spillman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. Dr. Haas, I'm Allison Spillman. I live in the Whitehall District. I have five kids currently enrolled in ACPS, and I'm also a candidate for the at-large school board seat. In just a few minutes, we're going to hear the report on the, from the Bellwether Education Partners, which was commissioned by ACPS to help us understand why our Black and Brown students are consistently underperforming compared with their white peers here in the county, as well as students of color statewide. I'm sure you've already read the report, and I hope that you are as distressed as I am. The report confirms what should be crystal clear. We are failing our Black and Brown students. But I also feel, and I hope you agree with me, that the Bellwether report highlights the opportunity that we now have to make real changes so that all of our students can learn, grow, and thrive. A lot of Bellwether's recommendations require more resources, more time for teachers to meet with parents, more high-quality professional development, more intervention for students who are falling behind, more high-quality instructional materials, and more time for formative assessment. We need to heed these recommendations, but we cannot simply dump these additional obligations on our teachers without supporting them with the proper resources. And we certainly can't expect that we achieve any of the desired results by reducing the resources available to them or slashing per-pupil funding, as some people have suggested. Over the past few months, I've met with many ACPS teachers and staff. They feel unheard and undervalued. Our teachers are our frontline workers. They spend more time during the day with our kids than we do. We need to listen to them. We also need to listen to our diverse families. The report makes clear that ACPS isn't effectively communicating with parents of students of color, and that there's a profound lack of trust. Parents need to be involved in their children's education, and that includes all parents and all students. The report also makes clear that despite ACPS's focus since 2018 on identifying and correcting systemic racism in our schools, we've not done enough to change. As an outside observer, Bellwether confirmed that systemic racism is still very real here in our school system. We can't have excellent schools if we're failing any of our students, Black, Brown, special needs, and otherwise. We cannot implement real solutions if we don't believe that systemic racism is harming our students of color. And we cannot make headway on any initiative for improvement without supporting our teachers. I implore you to act swiftly to implement real, meaningful change recommended by the Bellwether report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spillman. Next up is Heidi Gilman Bennett.
Hello, my name is Heidi Gilman Bennett. I am a parent and active volunteer in the Samuel Miller District. My heart is breaking for students and families who have been systematically deprived of opportunities to learn and thrive. I now understand what systemic racism means in our public schools. It is the continuation of the hidden structures and rules that ACPS Central Office has put in place and actively maintained for decades. Three points today. Number one, this is a system's failure. It is not about our amazing teachers, who have clearly been doing everything possible with the poor tools they have been handed. I congratulate Bellwether for generating such brutally honest quotes, and nothing is surprising. It's not just ACPS should have known. There are leaders who did know, and were unwilling and/or unable to take effective action. It is not enough to have good intentions. I urge you to use this as an opportunity to consider changes, including how to deal with with those in positions of power who have failed our educators and our kids. Related, number two, huge decisions need to be made very soon. Do we trust that the same people who have put this system into place can also, on their own, be the same ones to dismantle it? Please review whether the task force has the diversity and the expertise needed. Please consider the value of continuing an independent organization for expert guidance and project management. Our educators need a route to continued open input, particularly without collective bargaining in place. Number three, the Bellwether report is missing key initiatives for reading. Yes, thankfully, ACPS is forced to replace being a reader, which clearly hasn't worked. But our kids cannot wait a whole year while ACPS gathers input. We need short-term solutions for the overwhelming number of students who require reading intervention at K-3, upper elementary, middle school, and high school. Our teachers need high-quality materials and Tier Two intervention support for this fall. Our kids deserve high-intensity tutoring in reading and tutors in our rural schools. And we need to inform families of the very basics. Is my child behind? Is my child on track to attend college? What services are available at school, in the community, and what can I do at home to help? In summary, I am grateful for this audit, truly. But please, it is beyond time for actual change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilman Bennett. Next up is Mary McIntyre.
I'm Mary McIntyre. I'm from the Ryodistrict. Sometimes with my students, we use a focus word for the day. The word that I hope you focus on for tonight's meeting is accountability. As I read the Bellwether reports, I started to make a list of the issues that they highlighted, and as it became longer and longer, I got more and more angry because so many of the things that they are telling you are things that we have already told you. I counted around seventy issues, and I'm sure that I missed some. At the April 27th meeting, Dr. Haas says he wants more accountability for principals and staff, and he wants teacher performance assessments to reflect the SOL results of their students. Since the accountability door has been opened, I'm going to walk through it. Let's talk about accountability. If you want to start holding teachers like me accountable for standardized test results, first we need to talk about who is accountable for all the things outside of my control that affected my ability to be successful? Who is accountable for the fact that my school was understaffed all year with multiple teacher, TA, or subpositions not being filled, including sped and ESOL? Who's accountable for all the late or missing buses, missed instructional time, and student stress that that caused? Who's accountable for the communications that are sent out from the division that are written at such a high academic level, many of our families can't understand them, even native speakers? Who is accountable for purchasing an elementary literacy program that many teachers couldn't implement with fidelity because they weren't fully trained, and now it will go in the trash because it's not on the state's approved list? Who's accountable for the fact that we don't have enough planning time to actually plan high-quality lessons that align with state standards and email or call parents to build relationships and keep them in a loop about what their child is learning and how to support them, and provide meaningful feedback on student work, and enter data into EdInsight so we can analyze what's working and what's not, and work on our CRT certification? Who's accountable for the fact that nearly a third of my school needed intervention support in order to catch up to their peers, and yet we still weren't given any more specialists to provide that support until next year? All of those things affect our success, and yet I doubt anyone else's evaluations will accurately reflect those failures. So when our SOL scores are released this summer, please remember that teachers like me were desperate for help that never came. You all use the term stakeholders regularly, as if this is some kind of a business, but if this was a corporation, there would be some accountability of the leadership over the problems that I just mentioned, the Gallup poll results, the audit reports, and many other things, because these results are not accidental. Multiple bad decisions by multiple people led us here. Whose job is it to hold people accountable? That's you. I am trying extremely hard to do my job despite all of the problems, and I need you to do yours.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. The next one will be on Zoom. Ms. Marie Scott. We can't hear you.
Maybe we can respond to her in chat and let her know that we can't hear her. It looks like she's probably wondering what's going on. We're working on, working on figuring out how we can hear you. We don't think it's on your end.
We think it's on ours.
I can tell you can hear us. Do we want her to leave and come back? Okay, she's going to try that. She's going to come back.
Welcome to working in 2020.
She's probably coming back pretty quick.
I'm going to try to join a meeting. Okay. I'm going to try to join it off of my phone.
Okay, okay, okay. More minute, and then otherwise, I think we need to. I don't even know if she's on.
Oh, there she is.
Great.
and I'm a substitute teacher for ACPS. Across the county, from Western to Journey, I would sub. I noticed this sparring gap between certain districts, particularly between the schools in the western part of the county and those closer to Charlotte. I believe having a bird's eye view as a sub really helped me understand our school system and its flaws, such as academic differences, overall morale, and financial differences. For the margin between the schools to be smaller, unique and specific solutions must be made for each school, whether it's monetary, academic, all for children to thrive. As a minority myself, every child I encountered with time, I gave them new hope. With time, I showed them the ability they can go to college. When I was in schools in Crozay with less diversity, I felt I showed them new perspectives as well. It's not on the teachers, they're trying. It's on the system to propel these kids forward. These are children of different stories, immigrants, one-parent housing. Some of these kids might have parents on drugs, you never know. They're on different paths. I observe certain schools have higher concentration of kids with behavioral issues. Perhaps we can work with UVA psych department and have therapy for them. Graduates don't mind having a good resume. Graduates wouldn't mind hoping at all. It's more than counseling, it's professional help. It's more than passing them through each grade. It's about retention of the academic so they can have a viable future. For example, Crozay and Murray have A-based classes, but Crozay has more A-based wins with toys and bigger spaces and one-to-one student ratios, while Murray has one room and an A for several students. That is not fair. Journey, by far my favorite school I subbed at, has students who don't believe in themselves. I had one young man, never would do his work. I was tasked to take him to the side. I found out he was a dancer. I found out that if I just talked to him, now he believes in himself to open up his own dance school and go to college for business. I see potential in all these children. They just need individualized help to bring it out. They need flex schedules. Eighty-one, seventy-one minutes to eighty-one minutes of a class period is terrible. I went to CCF schools. I was in their shoes at a public school labeled "bad." I was acting out because I didn't need the help, I didn't have the help I needed for my ADHD, or skilled counselors to address my outbursts. I went to Catholic school and my behavior instantly changed. These children don't have that opportunity. I, uh, sorry, my apologies. You all have the resources. If Henry can spend thousands on a playground and their PTO has those huge influxes of cash as opposed to school-like Journey or Greer, why can't we disperse the money where it should go? If you say no child left behind, truly mean it with vindication. It broke my heart going to certain schools and coming home every day looking at my child like, if I put you in public school, this is happening to you too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marie.
All right, that concludes, that concludes our public comment.
Thank you, everyone. Oh, is my mic on? Okay, let that be the last of our technical difficulties. Thank you for everyone that gave public comment. We are only two minutes behind schedule, so, so on track. It brings us to school division business. We're going to start off with Mr. Zimmerman, not make him wait until the end, with our third quarter financial report.
Good evening, school board members. I want to present for the board's consideration the third quarter financial report. Wanted to say that we do have a very strong financial performance so far this, this current year. Our savings are up relative to what we had anticipated in the last quarter's financial reports. We do anticipate savings to be greater for, particularly for our compensation and benefits section. We are still analyzing this. However, we do anticipate ending the fiscal year with a positive balance. We do anticipate being slightly above our 2% fund balance as set by the board of supervisors. So we, we do anticipate meeting that full amount and then perhaps being, having other options available at that time. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Zimmerman? Mr. Zimmerman is in. I'm sorry, can you refresh my memory? We take action on this correctly, proven?
We would ask that you would receive the report as presented.
Okay.
I move, we receive this report as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just at a, at a future meeting, you'll be giving us options for the fund balance access?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Zimmerman, I hope that you take it as a testament to the good job you're doing that we have very few questions.
Thank you.
You do great with our, with our financial reports. Thank you. And that puts us back on schedule.
Thanks, Jack.
Oh, sorry. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, this brings us to our media subjects. We're on to 9.2, which is going to be our bellwether report. I just want to do a quick temperature check. Is anyone feeling like they need a break now and then we do the bellwether? It's just a lot to jump into and we've had a closed meeting since five. Okay, so I'm going to just adjust the schedule and let's take our break now and then we will jump into the bellwether report. So we will do a 10-minute break, returning at 7:47.
Years ago, we, before my time, if we had a budget.
Do you have a budget?
If you come to the, you can link to it there, and if you, when you see the calendar, if you click on the, the date of the meeting, it'll have all of the agenda items. And so if you come down here and you click on the bellwether, then it opens and there's, there's four boards, plus their calendar.
Right. Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Right.
Achieve their goals in life and eventually support their communities. As we began this journey with you all, we were able to look at your strategic plan from 2021. And there are three key goals that stood out. You know the goals, you wrote the goals. Around thriving students, number one, affirming and empowering communities and equitable transformative resources. And we think that what led to this audit was really around goal number one, thriving students. You have a goal to support all students. It is very, very clear in the work you're doing and have done. That aligns very closely to Bellwell's goal as well. So this goal number one kind of led, was the lens we led through to this audit, leading to that first big question that Pat discussed is around why are black and brown students in Elmore County not performing as high as white, more affluent students also compared to the state, among other black and brown students? Big, big question involving K-5 reading, K-5 math, other one, the key things of success, reading and mathematics, right? As we did this audit, I want to be clear that this is not just about black and brown kids, it's about all students. So you'll see recommendations on root causes that not only impact black and brown, but impact the results of all students, young people in the division. So we engaged in three phases of the work. Phase one is getting to know who ACPS is, right? So we spent a lot of time analyzing data that we received from you all, public data. We did a division health assessment to see where you were, our ratings, pluses, deltas. And then we went deep into the work. We got into classrooms, got into to visit families, teachers, students, community members to really see what is happening instructionally in the classrooms. How do parents feel? How do stakeholders feel? How do teachers feel about their experiences in the county? What's working, what's not working? From that, we then went to the root cause analysis. We took information from phase one and phase two and went deep into all the root cause barriers that we believe are holding back the success of those students. And then went into recommendations that we believe could address those barriers and support kids. I want to speak briefly about phase two because I think this is where we were privileged to go into 11 schools, to visit hundreds of stakeholders, community members, to really get an idea of the experiences of people and the students and the teachers and staff, families, you all, the central office folks, of how they're experiencing being in the division. And that was critical. I think when we think about our time, to be in the most humblest way, we were here for a snapshot, right? Charlottesville has been here for years. It's a deep, rich history in this community, in this city, in this county. We have a wonderful university, right? Rich history. There's also something that aren't so rich about Elmore County and the division, and that's okay. So we're just here for a snapshot, but we believe by interviewing so many stakeholders, we had a good snapshot, a comprehensive view of what was happening in the division. And so when you see the recommendations, don't forget that this is over, we interviewed 300 and something people, right? From all walks of life, men, women, young, old, black, white, Spanish speakers, native speakers, students in different grades, teachers, central office staff to develop this back base. So glad to do that, but also want to let you know this is a snapshot, but a comprehensive snapshot. And so from the first two phases, we looked at a set of data in different areas. One was qualitative data, which really came from the stakeholder interviews, the families, the teachers, the students, central office folks of their experiences in the division. The second was observation data. This is where we really loved getting into classrooms, seeing teachers engaged with kids and kids engaging with kids and vice versa, talking to principals, talking to counselors, and getting to see what is happening in the classrooms in regard to instruction and experience of kids and student teachers in the rooms. And the third was around quantitative data. We analyzed public data that was available for us, from you all, also looked at internal data to understand what's happening on paper when it comes to results of students in the division. And the last piece was we looked at best practices across the country, research-based evidence practices, things that we've seen, people we've supported across the country to bring to the table and think about recommendations when root causes were identified. And so from all of that work, we developed three reports. You all have these three reports. And so I recommend you read all the reports. They're pretty detailed and this gives you a good picture of all the work. The first report really discussed the experience of students of color and their families. And this came from interviews and focus groups. The second report looked at classroom observations and this came from, again, being in schools, interviewing teachers and seeing instruction firsthand. And the third report looked at the role of systems from the central office, structures, roles responsibilities that led to the success or lack of success of students of color, traditionally in students, all students in the school setting. And from those three reports, we developed some key themes. And let me just say again, this had a lot of information, right? And so there's lots of themes. I recommend, again, read all three reports. But we wanted to highlight kind of five themes in each report, and I'll talk about a few here. And these themes paint a picture of what's going on in each report and in the division. The first I want to talk about is the theme around the experience of students of color and kind of their families, right? What do they feel about being in the division and in schools? I want to say first, you should be very proud that in schools, we saw great relationships among peers, students, teachers, teachers, teaching students. There's very positive one feeling that we saw when they engaged each other in the classrooms, in the hallways. And so the work you've done to develop these strong cultures is clear. The second piece is that students have goals, right? All students have goals, right? What we did see though is that our black and brown students' goals were usually around trade schools, tech schools, and less of going to college, right? And we're going to unpack why if you look further in the root causes. I also wanted to do a little shift though and say despite that warm culture, families did not feel as valued as we thought they would, and I think as you would hope they would be, right? And there were a couple of things that came out. They didn't always know what was happening for their students, educational like experiences, grades. There were some things that came out they weren't aware of, grade-changing systems. And so I think there's a need to really think about, one, how do we support families to understand their experiences better, their students' experiences better, to know what's going on in schools? But also how do we partner with them more to understand how we take their solutions, their ideas to improve instruction? And this is not easy, right? Again, we're looking with parents who may have had bad experiences in schools, right? May not have the best experience in their K-10 environment. And so the trust we build, it's not pointing a finger at the division, it's reality. There's trust that must be built with some of our families. The second report was around what's happening in the classroom, right? From our observations. And so again, we tried to highlight the top five highest themes that bubbled up, but again, there are other themes in the actual report. First I want to share is your commitment to investing in research-based practices, really strong theoretical practices is clear. You've given teachers some resources, some curriculum resources, some trainings. You have the credentialing process for teachers. These are all great things. And I believe the outcome should be increasing rigor and equity for all students. However, it's not seen, right? We see there's a lack of equity and rigor across classrooms. And I'll be naming this very frankly, we saw more rigor in tasks provided at more affluent schools and less at more urban, black and brown schools. When you think about that, you can't expect a student who's getting less rigorous tasks to perform as high on the SOL as someone who's getting more rigorous tasks. And so I think what you desire is not happening, right? But you are investing in that. The other piece is around professional learning systems. You do have a lot of resources around coaching, around professional learning communities at the campus level and division level that are great investments in time, energy, and money. However, they're not completely aligned. And so we saw a disconnect of where those alignments happening. And the last piece I want to share in this one is just around compliance versus engagement. And this is twofold on students and I would also say when it comes to managing adults, right? We saw a lot of compliance in classrooms. Kids didn't misbehave. They were learning, they were answering questions, but true engagement was not there, right? The deep, authentic engagement you want to see in a rigorous classroom was lacking. This also could be led into what we see with the adults. There is a coaching, there's a walkthrough tool. It's very compliance-driven. It doesn't get deep into what excellence looks like. So it's like a checkbox. When you think about that, are you driving for engagement or compliance? So this is a trend that came up in this second report. And the third report was around the role of systems and structures, really focused on the central office, right? How's the central office impact engagement and learning for students of color in particular, but all students on the campuses? And so again, I want to add a couple of things here. The first one is around equality versus equity. Again, you should be proud, right? Again, celebrate the work you've done to really drive equity as the piece, not equality, for the division. It is clear that teachers, central office staff, leaders understand equity is the way forward, right? And that means every kid gets what they need. That is clear. You've put systems in place, you've put trains in place to help people understand biases, unpack anti-racism, and that is happening. However, it is unclear of who owns what when it comes to the campus responsibilities, right? What is standard across the campus as far as expectations? Does the central office own it? Does the campus own it? Is there autonomy for the campus to do A versus B or is the district managing that? And that's just clarity needs to be fixed. The other piece is around inclusive decision-making. I think this process is a huge start to get voices of those, the teachers, staff, students involved. But there is a disconnect between how decisions are made and how inclusive the decisions are being made that impact students, teachers, and schools. I would also want to add one more, I think paints a good picture as well, that kind of tags on to number three. And I don't want to spend too long, so I want to get the root causes. But that fifth one around collaboration and alignment, again, you have done a lot of investments to support students in schools. Where we see a gap is that the relationships are strong, right? They're strong across adults. But the gap is how are they truly collaborating to make sure they're aligned, right? The alignment. And so we don't, we have the left hand and the right hand walking together, leading together. They're not conflicting, you know, ideas or conflicting pathways. But how do we make sure that every team individual is working towards the same goal? Maybe a different vehicle, but going in the same direction. And right now you have a lot of great things, but not always aligned for that direction. So from these three reports, we then took them to identify the root causes and the recommendations. And that's the report you have, I think most of you have seen, that outlines those root causes, recommendations. And again, these recommendations for you all to take, to decide upon with the task force, the way forward. They're recommendations and we think that once the task force identifies where to go, you will have some hopefully traction. I'm going to now pause and give this to my teammate to really talk about the root causes and the recommendations.
Thank you, Anson, and good evening, board members. And Dr. Haas, again, just want to express our appreciation for being able to partner in this incredibly important work with you. As we think about kind of naming the root causes that really get at what is driving some of those themes and those observations that Anson just walked through, one of the things that we wanted to be consistent with is the division's focus on research-informed and evidence-based practices. In order to remain consistent with that focus, we have really anchored our root causes and recommendations in two evidence-based frameworks. The first framework is Elmore's Instructional Core. The Instructional Core is incredibly important in that it talks to us about the relationship between teachers, students, and content. And it tells us some really important things about this relationship. One of the things it tells us is that no matter what your investment is, if it ultimately isn't evident in the instructional core, it will not result in improved outcomes for students. The Instructional Core also tells us that these three components, students, teachers, and content, are very much interrelated. And if you make an investment or a change in one, you must make a comparable change in the other two. What that means is that it's not sufficient to make investments in high-quality content. Because without the comparable investment in the knowledge and skill of teachers, for example, what will happen is low-level teaching of high-level content. Without the investment to ensure a culture where students are valued for their authentic identities and where they experience high expectations, you will get low-level student interactions with high-quality content. One of the, the third thing that this framework tells us is that at the center of the interaction between students, teachers, and content is the instructional task. And the instructional task is the greatest predictor of student performance. And so if students are most often asked to struggle with tasks that are not aligned to standards and are below grade level, that is the performance we can expect of students. So when we think about our recommendations and root causes related to instruction, we will ground it in Elmore's Instructional Core framework. The second framework is the PELP coherence framework. And you see at the center of this framework is the Instructional Core, but you see several rings around it. And what those rings represent are enabling conditions. You see theory of change, which really speaks to how do decisions that are made at the central office level make it down to the classroom level where teachers and students and content are interacting? How does feedback from that interaction get back up to the central office to inform what resources, professional learning, and tools are needed? You see a ring around strategy, again, a necessary enabler, but on its own insufficient. And then you see the final ring around the coherence amongst culture, systems, and structures, resources, and stakeholders. So we will talk about some root causes today aligned to this framework as well. Our first set of root causes, there are five root causes that we elevate. The first three are related to the Instructional Core. Root cause number one, contributing to why students of color are not experiencing the same level of success as their white, Asian, and more affluent peers, is that instructional tasks do not consistently reflect the same level of rigor required by the SOLs. So as we were in classrooms, we saw a range of instructional tasks. And more frequently, instructional tasks that white and more affluent students were asked to perform tended to be more standards-aligned and more on grade level, if not above grade level. We also saw differences in how students were being asked to respond to instruction. Were students asked to engage with one another in critical thinking and problem-solving? Or were responses more rote? Our second root cause that we highlight is around adult learning. I want to point out here that we very intentionally say adult learning and not teacher learning. Because while the knowledge and skill of teachers is critical, the knowledge and skill of the adults meant to support teachers in building their practice is also critical. This extends to instructional coaches, it extends to interventionists and specialists at the school, and it extends to central office leaders charged with making instructional decisions that are then implemented district-wide. And then finally, around curricular resources. We want to acknowledge the division's efforts to invest in high-quality instructional materials, especially at the K-5 reading and math levels. However, we observed gaps in curricular materials at the elementary level related to interventions. And so what tools and resources do teachers have when students are not able to access core instruction? We also saw gaps related to secondary math, which is a significant contributor to ninth-grade Algebra I performance. Moving to the second set of root causes, these are more related to the PELP coherence framework. So again, those enablers of a strong instructional core that are necessary but insufficient on their own to improve student outcomes. The first root cause is around strategic alignment. We really want to acknowledge just the thoughtful strategic plan that the district has in place. What we observe are opportunities for more coherence across departments in the division, tighter coherence between decisions that are made at the division and how those are ultimately implemented and experienced at the school and classroom level. And a real opportunity to clarify the district's theory of change, that being the role of every individual in this district, especially those on the academic side, to ultimately improve the Instructional Core. And then finally, around stakeholder engagement. Internal and external stakeholders are not experiencing engagement in ways that feel authentic and meaningful to them. We acknowledge and applaud the district's efforts around task forces and committees and surveys to get input. What we heard from teachers in particular is they want their expertise to be leveraged as part of the solution. They are ready to engage with the division in that way. We also heard from families that they want greater visibility into what their students are learning and greater tools and resources that empower them to be a part of their students' learning as well. When you read the full report, what you will see for each of these root causes is a summary of things that we observed and measured during the current state assessment that contributed and informed that particular root cause. You will also see a summary of research that we referenced to develop the recommendation. And then you see an overview of the recommendation and then a highlight of one to two initiatives per recommendation with very specific action steps. We will not go through all of that content for each of the recommendations this evening, but instead we will go through kind of that middle slide you see there, which are the high-level recommendations aligned to each of the five root causes. As we do so, I also just want to highlight that there are lots of things that we could have recommended. What we have decided to do here are recommend what we feel are the highest leverage and highest return efforts the district can take and the most important first next steps. So I'll turn it back to my colleague, Anson, to walk us through the first three recommendations.
Thanks, Akisha. So we want to walk through the recommendations that align to each root cause. And before I go through these three, the first three, I want to say like, these are not in isolation. As Akisha said, there must be coherence, right? Coherence. When you change one factor, the other factors change. I was a math teacher, so like, things change, right? So one-to-one correlation. You cannot change one without changing the other. And so when you think about these actions, think of them as a holistic picture of support to drive forward. They may be tabled in different priorities of when this begins, A, B, or C begins, but they all must be connected, right? In each recommendation. So the first one is going to address the first root cause around instructional tasks. Do not consistently reflect the same level of rigor required by the SOLs, right? The recommendation at a high level is organize instruction around rigorous tasks. So if we're not having those tasks in classes consistently, let's make instruction focused on task, right? That allows all students, in particular, black and Latinx students, to deeply engage in challenging, authentic, standards-aligned instruction, right? Every single day in authentic ways. And so this looks like a number of ways. Again, these should not be thought of in isolation. The first is around increasing the frequency until the affirmative assessments, right? Meaning assessments in class, real-time checks for understanding for students, right? Including common instructional tasks to inform both, both things. Inform the student needs, so real-time, teachers can address student needs real-time, and also address instructional practices. Is the teacher not doing this enough? Or is a resource needs to be fixed? We can do that real-time with more formative assessments. And what we saw was there was a lack of those happening in classrooms. The second of this, I would say, is around professional learning opportunities for teachers. So as you think about that first, that coherence in the instructional core, you cannot have a great task without great training. So we have here PD for teachers, right? Supporting teachers with the right PD that's right for them at their level to make sure they understand the standards, the SOLs, and how to use those, how to instruct to move those tasks forward in the classroom, right? So how does the curriculum, the training and the PD align to those tasks for teachers? The third is around adopting a K-5 ELA, a secondary math, Algebra I curriculum, right? There is a gap in curriculum. We see this, we know this, there is a need to adopt this. Curriculum, as you know, does not happen overnight. So this can be a longer-term process, but we do know there is a need and an action to think thoughtfully about what curriculum you have for K-5 ELA, for secondary math, and Algebra I. And making sure those curriculum really have high rigorous tasks. And the last piece, again, thinking about this holistic picture of this recommendation, is thinking about having principals do walk-throughs and share their themes with each other in a collaborative way. So structuring principal PLCs where they go deep with instruction, not just the task of managing the school, but how do you think about instruction across the division, across schools? So having them come together to identify, what did you see in your math classrooms and your ELA classrooms? What do you see happening around task in science and math and reading or whatever? And then discuss that together helps them grow as a team, also helps you all, the division, see where are the gaps across schools and across classes. The second root cause is around adults not being equipped with knowledge and skills to meet instructional needs of all students. And again, as Akisha said, we mean adults holistically saying all the adults in the division, not just teachers. And so the recommendation at a high level is develop a systematic approach to adult learning that combines workshop PD, job-embedded coaching, and professional learning communities, PLCs, for support all staff at the division level, the campus level. And all these things together will improve all adult skills to support learning at the campus. And again, we're thinking about all the adults. And so what this could look like at a high level, again, before we get into the nitty-gritty, it could look like, A, having a unified vision for adult learning. What does a division think adult learning looks like? What's the theory of change for adult learning? What do you believe is the best way to approach adult learning? If we have these inputs, we get these outputs. What does that look like? What does it mean to have principal walkthroughs, instructional coaching, the PDs, the PLCs, all moving towards the same direction in an aligned way? Again, having different, maybe different like support structures, but all moving towards the same goal as supporting students and practices in the classroom. The second is build capacity of individuals in central office and school-based roles. So thinking about, again, all adults, the interventionists, right? Are essentially supporting kids every day in a different way. How are they supported and developed? The reading specialists, what does their PD look like? And other support roles that may not be teachers, what does their PD structures look like? And what does their adult learning look like to support them to grow in their skills? Third, revamp the classroom walkthrough tool. I discussed this slightly earlier. You have a walkthrough tool, great start, but it is very, very much at a high level. It does not get into the nuances of what it means to have great instruction. Again, it is a great checklist, it's great for compliance, and it gets principals and leaders in classrooms. How can you tweak that, modify that, maybe make that more comprehensive? Go deeper in the task, go deeper in engagement to actually see the look-for's of what it means to have a great classroom, a great student engagement, a great students on task. And then going into that last one, which kind of combines this first one as well, what have you thought about using a walkthrough form as a leveraging tool to support PD for adults, right? So meaning that not just principals, but principals, specialists, coaches, all do walkthroughs together to understand what's happening in classrooms at a high level. And those observations are a way to grow the adults, but also identify gaps in classrooms. And the third root cause in the Instructional Core was around gaps in content, specifically in secondary math, K-5 interventions, that create barriers for teachers and students, right? They lack the curriculum or resource to do their job best as teachers to support students, really in the tier-two instruction. And so the idea here, higher recommendation, is to invest in high-quality instructional materials to fill content gaps, right? Fill those gaps in content, including consistent math curriculum, really at the secondary level, Algebra I level, middle grades, a comprehensive system for RTI, means response to intervention. What does that look like to really go in deep tier-two instruction that has a system, curriculum, resources for teachers and those interventionists? And then thinking about adopting a state-run curriculum for literacy, right? That is state-recommended as you think about the next iteration of literacy and reading. What this could look like? Curriculum is a hard thing. It is hard to adopt, it is hard to engage, it is a two-year process. So this rubs into kind of a long-term, short-term, right? The short term is you have students right now going into algebra as freshmen, right now, who need support, right? So we say, don't wait for them. We got to figure something for them right now. So the short term is build a diagnostic to support those students going into ninth grade, identifying what the gaps that they might have, then possibly create a summer intervention, a summer camp to help them close some of those gaps before the school begins, get them ready for ninth grade. And in the summer transition camp, you could talk about, you could grow skills in mathematics, algebra, and just high school skills, right? Getting ready for high school. So an option there to support those students right now, real-time. The second piece is high-intensity tutoring, sometimes called high-impact tutoring with interventionists. And so this is where you have small group instruction over a cadence of two to three times a week, 45 minutes per session, and it's deep, deep response to the students' needs. Over time, hopefully they grow and grow those skills. So there's various ways you can do this. You can do this in the summer. You can do this in the summer, you can do this also during the school year, or do it both, summer and school year. And the long-term plan is more around the curriculum and RTI systems. Again, takes a longer time to develop, but also want to name this as well, so adopt HRM for Algebra I. That builds up on the skills, strategies, really aligned to the state SOLs, and we would say, supports those rigorous tasks you want to see kids engage with every day. The other piece with this is that, A is big. So as Akisha said, A involves the curriculum adoption. It should be an inclusive process. Are you including teachers in the adoption process? Getting their voice, right? Having them look at different options to give you input on what is, what is not good, what they like, why they don't like it, trial and error. It could be a pilot. Then, what's the PD look like? The training for those teachers to align with that curriculum? What does the follow-through look like for principals and leaders to understand that curriculum? So A is long, but is super important. B and C, we also think can kind of build off of A. And once the curriculum is built out, how do we embed those Algebra I skills in lower grades? Thinking about, what are the skills that we know they need in Algebra I? How do we build that skill and practice into sixth grade, seventh, eighth, so it's continuum? So we're not waiting until ninth grade to teach fractions or factors, it's happening in the sixth, seventh, eighth grade years. And the last one is just continue to develop the content knowledge of interventionists on this PD side, making sure those interventionists really have the skills they need to push in, to support those students, and push in or pull out formats to support those kids in the tier-two instruction. So again, think about this as a holistic set of actions, not in isolation, but together they will drive change for your students.
Last two recommendations, and then we welcome your reactions and questions and discussion. And again, these last two recommendations really respond to that PELP coherence framework around the enabling factors. As Anson shared, there are no quick fixes to improving the instructional core. It is work that requires sustained focus and, you know, not switching back and forth between strategies without it being data-informed. And because of that, it is really important to have a strong theory of change where everyone in the district understands their role for improving the instructional core, ensuring that work and decisions are not happening in isolation, but instead that there is intentional integration and coherence, especially around work that ultimately informs and dictates what is happening at the school level and at the classroom level. The last thing you want is for principals and teachers to get direction that they feel is in conflict, or that they feel that they simply do not have time to do all of those things in a given day. Instead, that work must be integrated and well-aligned. We think that there is significant opportunity to improve the feedback loop from the division to the school and classroom back up to the division. Our teachers know best what is and is not working about the curriculum, and we have to listen to them, and we have to aggregate what we're hearing from them so that things that we're seeing among individual teachers inform the focus of instructional coaching. Themes that we see across and within an individual school inform additional support to that school, but then themes that we see across multiple schools has to inform the professional learning that is offered by the division, the tools and resources that the division develops to support the practice of teachers at the school level. We see an opportunity to be really clear about what is required and where there is autonomy. Being clear about what is required is critical to ensure a basic level of instruction, of high-quality instruction across the district. This is particularly important for our students of color and our economically disadvantaged students who disproportionately rely on the instruction and what they are receiving in school compared to other students who may have more supplementary opportunities outside of school. So being really clear about what is required and what the standard of excellence is for classroom instruction is incredibly important. We see an opportunity to reimagine the instructional coaching model. It has so many strong attributes, it has contributed to so many strong outcomes, especially for new teachers and teachers new to the division. We see an opportunity to extend that model to be a part of the overall comprehensive adult learning system so that it is no longer opt-in, but instead a part of the supports that teachers receive. As you think about adopting new curriculum for K-5 literacy, secondary math, and Algebra I, that job-embedded instructional coaching will become a critical part of teachers internalizing and being able to offer that curriculum as intended. We also see a real opportunity to make more visible the progress against the strategic plan and against the goals and recommendations here. You have some really thoughtful strategies in your strategic plan and have identified some really intentional actions. Those, along with the recommendations in this report, really need to be measured, and what we're seeing in response to those needs to be discussed at all levels of the organization so that you can make just-in-time adjustments. One of the things we observe is a measuring of inputs and outputs and less measuring of outcomes. For example, we saw lots of evidence of the number of instructional walkthroughs per school being captured and reported. What we saw less evidence of is what were we learning from those walkthroughs? What were the instructional practices we expected to see and what did we actually see? That's what we want to measure because the instructional walkthrough is only a tool, and it's only an important and relevant tool in that it tells us what is happening in the instructional core. Our final recommendation is just around stakeholder engagement, strengthening systems for input and feedback. Again, we heard consistently from teachers that they want to leverage their training and expertise to be a part of the solution. We acknowledge and applaud the district for its efforts around task forces and committees, but I think you've seen both from this audit as well as from recent Gallup survey results that teachers want to be engaged differently. We could offer all kinds of recommendations about what it looks like to do that well, but I think the people that you want to ask are your teachers. And create engagement opportunities, opportunities for them to help you figure out how to do the work indicated in this audit well. And I think it's equally important to listen to parents. I think because the district is adopting curriculum district-wide, it creates an opportunity for district-wide tools that give parents more visibility into what their students are learning and provides tools and resources that parents can understand that empower them as their students' first teachers. I have two elementary-age students myself, and I am consistently seeking resources to understand what their day-to-day learning looks like and what my husband and I need to do at home to support the teachers and supplement that learning at home. What we heard consistently from families, and yes, from families of color, is that they want those tools and resources. They want to be empowered as their students' first teacher, and we recommend that the division really double its efforts to position them as such. Again, we just want to thank you for this opportunity to partner with you in this incredibly important work. We cannot acknowledge enough the importance of you taking this step and laying bare the challenges that are in the district, being transparent about that with your community, with all of your stakeholders, and the commitment to then respond to the findings. We welcome your reactions, questions, and discussion.
I will just start off before we open questions by saying thank you. Thank you very much. I'll also offer a quick apology. My kids were supposed to deliver coffee at the break, and I thought it was going to be more disruptive if they walked up while you were talking, so I was like, I'm going to just make my way out there and grab it for them. So yeah, I think it's opening up for discussion.
This is a lot to digest, and, you know, I thank you for this diagnostic and, you know, pointing the direction toward where we need to be going. This has been a challenge for us, and, you know, we have worked with our strategic plan and our anti-racism policies, and we were clearly aware that that was necessary but insufficient, and this provides us a tool for going forward. And, you know, you can't, you can't, sometimes you have to rip the bandage off and see where, you know, what needs to be done. So thank you for that. I'm a little overwhelmed at this moment, and talk to me about the theory of change. I mean, I don't even know what to ask, but you did mention it multiple times.
Yeah.
And how does that, how do we do that?
Yeah. Let me first respond to your feeling of overwhelm, and I will say, I know it's a lot of content. And though tonight is the end of our official engagement with the division, we would welcome your questions as you kind of dig deeper into these reports, both as a board and as a leadership team. We do not turn into pumpkins, so please reach out to us if you have questions. Related to the theory of change, and we are happy to share examples, but it really speaks to a series of if-then statements. And so one could imagine a statement, you know, if the central office provides the tools and resources and opportunities for professional learning and sets the standard for instruction, and then if principal supervisors and instructional coaches are charged with then providing the professional learning opportunities that translate kind of those tools and resources and standards of excellence into practice, and then if principals, X, Y, Z, and if teachers, X, Y, Z. And so it really clarifies the role of everyone in the system. So then, when you take on particular initiatives or make particular investments, you go back to that framework. And so then you ask yourself, what is the role of the division for adopting this new K-5 literacy curriculum? What is the role of kind of the middle? So those instructional coaches and principal supervisors? What is the role of principals? And so forth and so on. What we see now is a lack of that clarity, and what it causes is a lack of coherence across work that individually is research-informed and worthwhile work, but you don't get the benefit of all of it working together in concert. And that is what the theory of change really speaks to.
I, like Kate, feel there is so much here, and I'm so grateful, and I want to express how grateful I am that you were able to really get families and students, we have not been able to engage, as you found out, to really be candid. And I think that there's, that really speaks to your talent and, you know, the way you were able to engage folks, and the presentation of those quotes and pulling them together and everything, I think. We have it now. I mean, there are things that we've always thought and known, but we have it now in these reports from their mouths with the numbers, with every way in which they can be presented. And I am deeply appreciative of that, and, you know, very disheartened and disconcerted, but I'm just grateful for that, and I think, right now, I'm just in the moment of taking it in, understanding it, and, you know, really verifying and validating what we've thought, but, and so much more than that, and, you know, giving us direction. So I'm just, I'm very appreciative. Thank you.
So I want to start with two thank yous. So one, this recommendation for this process came out just as I was joining the board in January. So first, I mean, I've worked with a lot of school districts at a lot of states and a lot of just organizations in general who wouldn't have the guts to, first of all, do this RFP, engage with such a high-quality organization as Bellwether, and then sit and have this, these 120 pages put out publicly. And so first of all, a huge thank you to Dr. Haas and the leadership for doing that, for acknowledging that we have some issues, and for saying, we are going to face those issues, we are going to make them public, and we are going to take the first step. So I think that in itself is something we have to acknowledge because I've seen many school districts where they did an audit and it never saw the light of day. And so that's, it's a huge, it's a huge advantage that we did this. And then a huge thank you to your team. As Judy said, it is very hard to engage with families, especially to engage with families in such a short period of time. And I have to say, I was doubtful that you would have been able to do that in that unbelievable timeframe that we gave you to get this done before the end of the school year. So just a huge thank you for the comprehensive nature and for not being focused on just one thing, but for looking at all the levels, right? What do the families need? What do all the adults need? What do the children need? And what is the comprehensive approach that we need to do? I don't know if anyone can see this, but I have a research of my heart, right? And the last time I did this, I think I wrote a dissertation, right? Like, I tab this to their point. It's overwhelming because there's so much information, but that gives us a plan to go forward. So I mean, I think one of the things we need to think about as a board and as a division are kind of what are those next steps? I'm a short-term, medium-term, long-term person, and so beginning, I know the task force has started this, but I think kind of task force with board really need to sit down and spend time going into this. Because we've, you know, already been getting questions from teachers and from leaders and from parents because this is, this is a busy time of the year, right? There's, this came out at that point because this is the time the report was supposed to come out. But kind of knowing this is the end of the school year and it's a busy time, how do we make sure we take this and begin and continue those conversations so that those people that you've talked to understand what you said and feel part of that process and hear it? So I mean, I think that's one thing. It's like, what is the process? And I'm sure the division's already thinking about that, and there's some listening sessions that are happening tonight, but what over the next, you know, two to three months are those listening and discussion sessions at all levels? In an accessible way, right? In a way that also has interpreters for those families who don't speak the language the report is written in. And then I think about what are those next steps? Like, what is the, what is the cost of implementation? And what are those things that we need to think about now? And what are those things that we need to budget in the future? And then, I think finally, thinking about what is that kind of long-term plan that you talked about that keeps us accountable? So what do we do saying, as we move forward on a quarterly basis, is this something that is always an agenda item for the school board? I'm sure it's always going to be something on the superintendent's cabinet, but what does that look like so that we can be clear what the accountability is going forward and so that we can see if we are publicly or not making the improvements that we need? Thank you so much.
Thank you again so much for your report. And I have two questions, and one, I'm not sure really even how to phrase it, I guess. But in your report, you had said something about most of, like, brown students were being guided into technical jobs and not into going to college. Do you think that would be related to less rigorous, I'm not even sure what the right word is, but whether not somebody is not being as rigorous with those students in guiding them into that pathway as compared to being guided into the college pathway? And how serious is the problem? Because sometimes technical jobs can really give a huge page to kids. So how serious is the problem overall in that phase, too?
I really appreciate the question, and I'm happy to start, and Anson would invite you to jump in. I want to first state that, like, there is significant value to career in technical education. We live in a world where there are multiple and more varied economically viable post-secondary pathways. I think what we saw, however, were that Black and Hispanic students were disproportionately enrolled in those classes. And so it raised a question for us about expectations for those students in their post-secondary pathways relative to other students. I think another important metric to look at is that Black and Hispanic students are disproportionately taking Algebra I in ninth grade compared to to their white and Asian peers who disproportionately take it in the middle-grade years. That again speaks to both expectations, but then how those expectations result in the course-taking of students as early as elementary school to inform then the secondary math pathway.
Yeah. Akeisha said it spot on, but just to take the story a little bit longer. Imagine parents who aren't aware of the different options. And they just trust the school. And so they haven't even have a voice to even say, if I can roll my kid, my child in algebra as an eighth grader, they have a higher chance to go to college. They don't even know that option. So now, it goes from not just the school of expectations, it goes to the parents not being informed of what the options they have. And so this is what Akeisha's saying, this if-then, right? All these things work together. And so if a parent knew, Algebra I in eighth grade is an option. And I get resources and support from my kid interventions. Even though it's hard, but if they take it in the eighth grade, they have a better chance of taking higher math in ninth grade, in 10th grade, and then getting better scores on the SAT and ACT, right? All that leads to this like through line. And so I think that is the picture we want to say is, how do we make sure outcomes, not just on assessments, but life outcomes are equitable for, for all students, you know, not just black and brown, but all students, Latinx students, students with, you know, disabilities as well?
Okay. And then my second question. Your report is really fascinating. But as we began to try to bring changes about, would devising the theory of change be probably the first big step to take?
She thinks so.
I think so. Yes. I, I do think so. Because it really is an organizing mechanism for all of the work that you will ultimately undertake. A lot of decisions will, will be made at the leadership level, and that's okay. That's what we expect leaders to do. But we have to understand then, how those make it down to the classroom level. And there are a lot of layers to get to through before it can get there. And then we also need to make sure there's a feedback loop that comes back to central office. I, I happen to believe very strongly that the decisions that are made at the division level around what investments to make, what tools and resources to provide, what professional learning to provide, has to be informed by what's happening in the classroom. And so if you don't have that theory of change that really defines that feedback loop and ensures that it is continuously happening, then I think you have, you run the risk of making investments that are not informed by the needs of the instructional corps.
Just piggybacking off of that Graham's point, I, I think that, I'm just sort of struck that some of the ways in which we've tried to remove barriers have been passive. And what I appreciate, appreciate about your report is making it more active. Like, for instance, we've removed some barriers to, you know, advanced classes in the, you know, secondary, but we haven't pushed the kids from first through all the way to get there. So I appreciate the clarity around that.
You know, in response to that, I just want to acknowledge again, so many of the right first steps have been taken. It's about taking the next step. So we need to measure that we have, like, removed policies that were a barrier. But then we have to follow up and measure the extent to which that has resulted in more students of color and more economically disadvantaged students accessing those courses. And if we aren't measuring that and continuously coming back and talking about if it's changing and moving in the direction that we want it to, then we don't make changes beyond just having removed the policy that was the barrier in the first place. So I really appreciate you raising
I like the part of your report where you talked about educating the adults, which is more than, clearly more than the teachers. I mean, it includes educating the school board as well, no doubt. But also, with respect to the math, I really think that goes partly to families and getting the information out to families, but it also goes to the guidance counselors and the people who help select those courses and explain not only what's available, but why what's available is important and how it can impact your further choices. So, I don't even know what our policy is on professional development for guidance counselors. I'm sure there is one, but I don't know what it is. But that's why everyone needs to know what our theory of change is, right?
Okay. I have another really basic question. I think, Ms. Howell, you mentioned that you had some examples of theories of change. Are there any of the documents that you gave to us? And if not, how can we get them?
They are not in the documents, but you can get them because I will aggregate a couple of them and send them to Dr. Haas and the team.
Okay, thank you.
Would you talk a little bit, one of the things you didn't highlight tonight, but that I think is an important piece, that I think of all the, there's a lot of data that was very concerning, but one of the biggest was the, the suspension, the disproportionate suspensions. Would you just talk a little bit about kind of that piece of what you
I, I think, you know, this is not a problem that is just at ACPS, right? This is a problem that's across the country. When you think about, and I talked to Dr. Haas about this, we had a conversation about, you know, there's no like ill intention, but when you have a student population at a school that is a majority African-American, majority Hispanic, and its population of teachers is 8% women, it's not like a fault, but there is a gap of like understanding. It just happens. It's natural, right? It's not a bad thing. It's what it is. And I think there are some places where the learning can happen to, to grow. How do we understand the needs of those students? A lot of them are boys, right? Who have some needs and supports. And sometimes the supports that we have at your disposal may not be enough, right? And so what do you do? You send home. What do you do? You send ISS. And again, it's no, it's no fault of anyone, but I think there's just got to be figuring out, what are the, the issues they're dealing with? And how do we invest more? Is it hiring more male teachers of color? What is the investment to support not just the students, but also support the adults in learning how to navigate when students misbehave or disengage? And I would also say, having, I'm a father of a young, young black boy, if they're engaged, they behave. If they're engaged with rigorous material, they behave. And so how do we put the material that's in, again, goes back to the task? We put rigorous tasks in front of kids, I don't care if you're short, tall, black, white, you're going to engage in that task. And so it goes back to that core. How do we put the things in place for kids to really be engaged in? And then support them with the wraparound services that they need. But it goes back to that core piece of like those tasks that kids are engaged with.
So I think what I would want to talk about is next steps. So you, this is the end of your engagement with us, is what you said. I know we heard from Dr. Berlin about having another work session on this. It sounds like we're coalescing around the idea that we need to develop the theory of change, which could be a tangible next step. I guess I would ask you guys, while you're here, what would you advise the next step be for us? In a tangible way?
Yeah. I'm happy to start. I, you know, I think having conversations about these reports. I know Dr. Haas has engaged us in putting together some materials for teachers to be able to view to kind of support their understanding of these four reports and their recommendations. And I think just having those conversations across the division, but also in the community, in really authentic and accessible ways, is incredibly important. I think as you think about your annual plan for next school year, thinking about like kind of what is the first right step. I really want to caution you about trying to do all of this work and doing it, doing it quickly. This is thoughtful, intentional work. There's research that says it takes two to three years for a teacher to internalize a new curriculum and for that internalization to show up in their practice, right? Like, there are no quick fixes here. And so I really want to encourage you to, to take your time and think about this as a multi-year plan. I would point you to K2 reading, especially in schools that are disproportionately serving black and Hispanic students and economically disadvantaged students. And so as you look across these recommendations, one of the things you might think about doing is how you stage them. So what grade levels might you focus on first? What schools might, might you disproportionately invest in first? I think it's also really important to build the capacity of adults that are meant to support teachers in schools. I can't say enough how important it is that reading specialists, interventionists, instructional coaches, equity specialists, that they are really trusted as experts in both the curriculum resources as well as instructional practices, so that they can provide that job-embedded support for the teachers who are interacting with content and students.
I'll just add one more. I think the important piece is around the family engagement. We can't do this work without families. And research says, the more families are engaged, better chance of students to be successful, right? We know that. And so, black and brown families are engaged, but not engaged with the schools, right? So they are, let's not say they're engaged. They are engaged, but not engaged with the schools authentically. And so I think another push would be, I would, I would encourage you all to think about the systems and ways you engage families thoughtfully, not just in an email, or not just like sign this off, but true engagement where they're engaging their students, learning their curriculum, best practices. And so there are some places where families live on the outskirts of the town, right? You have a large county, right? And so how are you going, getting them engaged in the school when they're working nights? Going to their community and having a curriculum night, right? Instead of having it at the school, go to their neighborhoods, their apartments. And so I would also add to Akeisha's point around the curriculum and those shifts of theory of change, I would really think about the families and stakeholders as another lever, as a partnership in this work. And I don't think you can really do the work well at a high level without them engaged, right?
You mentioned, I think it was you, Akeisha, who mentioned that our model for our instructional coaches is an opt-in model. I mean, we, not for the new teachers or new to ACPS, but otherwise it is. How would you change that?
I would make it not optional.
I was surprised.
And I would really look across those instructional coaches. I would think about kind of what they are trained in, in terms of kind of their expert and skill. So again, if you think about like, how long it takes a teacher to learn a curriculum and to internalize a curriculum. And we've recommended adopting a new K5 literacy curriculum, middle grades math and Algebra I. Workshop PD will not be sufficient to help teachers learn new curriculum and translate that to instructional practice. But an instructional coach who can kind of be shoulder to shoulder and hip to hip with a teacher in a, in a classroom, who understands the curriculum, who understands the instructional practices that are expected, and can observe what a teacher is doing and say, hey, like, here's a strategy I think you can try. Here's a place I think you can help. Instructional coaches can also be leveraged in school-based professional learning communities. So when all of your K2 teachers are getting together and planning instruction around a unit that's new to them, you want that instructional coach to be able to answer questions and kind of demystify that curriculum. So I would look at how the instructional coaches are trained. And then I would look at how they are deployed. And again, disproportionately supporting schools where there are lots of new teachers, where instructional walkthroughs are telling us there are lots of opportunities to improve instructional practice. So this begins to get at like, how it all fits together, right? Like, we have the instructional walkthroughs as a tool. Let's, let's use that to know, like, where are the gaps in practice? And then let's, let's deploy our instructional coaches as a tool and a resource to help fill those gaps.
And just to, this could also look like doing a few schools first, right? Running a pilot.
That was exactly my next question.
You, I would say, on this idea of inclusivity, ask teachers what they need. Ask staff what they need. Ask coaches what they want to do. Bring them together in a room and say, how can we best make this work as a team of teachers and coaches? What do we do to make this possible, right? Use one or three, three or four schools on a pilot, see how it looks like. Give them the resources and investment to run it well, and then scale it out. So on this idea of going slow to go fast, I would not go full-scale. I would think about, how do we do this thoughtfully? Pilot something, run a cycle of continuous improvement, you know, over a quarter, over years, over two years, and then scale it out as you learn from those pilots.
I was just going to ask, how about a pilot? But you did it.
We're thinking alike. So earlier, Dr. Haas, we heard a little bit about the fun balance. And you, this is a question, you know, we've talked about a little bit, because we passed a budget. We knew this was coming. We, we talked about the fun balance. I think one of my questions is, you know, as we think about what is needed in the short term, right? I love how it's like, summer '23, fall '23, throughout the school year, then '24, '25, beginning to cost out, as we think about kind of everything, right? I hear you. We should, we can't do everything right at once, but beginning to think about what those costs might be so that we can help kind of think about, you know, what is needed and what, if there's approval that needs to happen. Because I think that's an important next step as well.
Yeah, I think I'm echoing a lot of comments. And there's just a lot to take in, because I actually have quite a few questions. But I'm, you know, I'm worried about our time and how much we really have right now. I'll just, I guess, throw a few out really quickly since we're here. I guess my hope is probably that we can continue to engage with Bellwether as we move forward, is what I'm imagining, if we decide to pursue this, a deeper dive into this. So I guess that's something we'd have to figure out. But while you're here, what extent do you feel it's necessary to bring in outside perspectives as we take on this work? Noninternal?
I think it's great. I think it's a balanced approach. I think we're outsiders, right? But a lot of those things that we, we said you already knew, sometimes just means translating it in different, in different ways. I think the outside perspective comes in very objectively, right? So, and some objectivity is good, to come in without any bias, without any history so you can see things from a higher level. I think that is a benefit to that. I think also, when you have outside experts or support, they're not in the work every day, so they can level out and level in pretty quickly and not be stuck with day-to-day, right? Sometimes you're in the day-to-day, you're pulled in different things. And so it's hard to dig deep into a priority. So I recommend, for those reasons, find something, if there's something you want to, external support, I would recommend do that. But be very clear, like, what, what their lane is. But I have seen benefits to outside support.
Okay. My last question, which is not the most meaningful one, I just think we need to have more stuff. But since you're here, I'm just curious, and I don't, probably can't say this eloquently, but I always felt a little discomfort, as a person of color myself, when we have these conversations around how, I know it was mentioned in the report, how we've adopted asset-based thinking, and we're making sure to frame these conversations in a way that feels like we're lifting up our students, not just focusing on where they're not doing well. And so I guess, since I'm trusting your outside perspective, what was your interpretation of what our students and families were saying? Because sometimes I feel like we are just pushing out this negative message around how our students of color and our low-income students are doing. And I worry about that.
I'll start first. First of all, I enjoyed ACPS. I enjoyed coming here. I enjoyed going to the mall, getting some food. I enjoyed talking to kids, the teachers, the families. Everyone was very warm at all the schools I went to. And I did a lot of observations. So first, like, there's a positive feel here, right? From the outside perspective, right? I'm outsider. What I would say is the students, I went to a high school, I think it was Monticello High School, I believe. I got lost. But I talked to a number of students, Latinx, black students, and they enjoy learning. They enjoy the school experience. They enjoy their teachers. They want to be successful. And it's very, very clear. I talked to families. They want to be successful, kids to be successful. They want that. Teachers as well. And that's, that should be, that, that is like a win, because some schools, it's not always happening. It's not always the case. But I would say, where the disconnect is, is around expectations. I think there is a clear gap between what is expected that kids of color can do, or poor kids, and kids who are more fluent, and non, non-kids of color, or immigrants, right? And again, I think it is, it could be a number of reasons. I don't want to get into the rabbit hole of why, but that's just coming up, right? We saw that. And so I think that then plays into the minds of students, and they see this. Again, they value their teachers' opinions. They like their teachers. But they also feel not expected to do the same work as their counterparts. An example, a student told me, Mr. Jackson, when I do one thing right, the teacher gets excited and says, awesome! And he feels bad because like, And he feels bad because, like, I should do it right. And so, how does he feel knowing that, like, your expectation is so low for me, I just do one thing right, I get like applause, when I should be doing all 10 of them right? And he understands as a student, a young student. So I think that is the disconnect. Again, this is not across every classroom, but a trend we saw. Again, I saw beautiful things, I saw kids engaged, but I also saw there was a level of expectation. Again, I don't want to get into like, the reasons why, I don't know all the reasons why, but there was a gap.
Yeah, I think that, that is maybe getting to what I feel like is occurring, and I wonder sometimes how we contribute to it, because we focus our conversations, I feel like sometimes, on all these things we assume that are negative in, in a low-income or a brown family. I mean, we heard it today in public comment, we, we assume that they might have a drug problem, they might have a broken-up home, we, you know, all these things that, and then I think sometimes we get off track from the fact that these kids can do as well or better than anybody else. So, you know, why are we just, but it, I'm just telling from up here, though, it feels weird, because we don't want to ignore, I don't want to say we don't need to provide extra supports for families that are struggling, but somehow I feel like we're caught in this cycle of focusing on things that aren't tied to what I think ultimately helps students of color, which is having high expectations and good outcomes that give them opportunities to succeed. So, I don't know, I, I appreciate it. I guess, I, I wrote a big note for myself to stay positive, this is hard stuff to take in, because I know how passionate so many people on the board are, people in our families, our teachers, our community members, about making meaningful change, and it can be frustrating to hear we have so much more to do, and it can be frustrating to think we've tried things and it's not panning out the way that we want, but I, this is, this is a step in the right direction, and I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to the next steps.
If I, and I, I'll just, no, we're not done yet, but, because we're going to continue to engage, I'm sure you will, somehow, but there's a quote I like to say, it's by, you know, James Baldwin, right, about America. He says, "If I love, I love this country, I will criticize this country," and some of the words, right? So I think, like, I just want to be very, like, show my gratitude to this board, to you all, that you love ACPS and love all kids, that's why you're critical, critical to this, right? That's why this work is so difficult, and that's why you criticize this, and you're able to put this up and make it public, because you want to do well and you love these students. And so, when I, when I see this, and the struggle you're having, it's because you have love, right? And so, in the words of James Baldwin, like, you love ACPS because you criticize ACPS, which is a beautiful thing. Yeah.
I have another question, I'm sorry. There was a press release saying, "Bellwether has come and given this, you know, harsh diagnostic about ACPS." How can we put together a message to families about what we hope to be doing? And what, what are we going to do about it? I mean, do we just leave that press release as the only public information out there? Or people, I mean, I think we need to do something, and I'm not at all talking about putting this up, but that, I mean, we're, we're very serious, I mean, my colleagues and I are very serious about this report and using it to take meaningful action. But how do we communicate something about this? Or should we? I mean, I don't know.
I think our actions are going to communicate what we're doing.
Right, but that's, as we've been told, may take two to three years of a pilot. I mean, yes, I mean, we can get a press release out about a task force, or, and that we're going to do a pilot, you know, I would hope at one of my schools, which is the highest, most of ours, and lowest income schools in the county, but, yes, I mean, I think ultimately, Ellen, you're absolutely correct.
I don't even need a press release, I think we just need to do it.
Well, no, there's already been a press release, that's the point.
And also, it could be done through just communication with, well, like, everyone being also, like, like they said, like, parents and stuff need to be aware.
Right, but we're not going to send, you know, several hundred pages of this report, which is extremely detailed, and we can't translate it into 20 languages. But, you know, so how can we communicate the essence of this, and the seriousness of this report, and the seriousness of what we hope to do?
I mean, I think, starting by communicating your why. I mean, why you commissioned this audit in the first place. I don't, I don't think any of you were expecting a rosy report. You had a sense that there were things that were not going the way that you wanted them to go, that there were opportunities to improve outcomes for our students furthest from opportunity. So you were expecting a report that laid that bare, and you would have been unsatisfied if that were not the case in what we delivered you. And I do think it's very important to focus on the intentional actions that you're taking going forward, and while improving the instructional core is certainly a long-term value proposition, we should absolutely have leading indicators that show the progress we're making. So we should be consistently seeing high-quality instruction in classrooms, and we should have tools and ways to measure that so that we can talk about how instruction is changing. We should see students performing better on high-quality instructional tasks, and we should have common tasks across grade levels and across focused schools where we can show that improvement. We might not see students right away at grade-level proficiency on SOLs, but we certainly should see growth. And so, we should celebrate and communicate broadly the progress that we're making towards goals. And when we're not making progress, we should also be transparent about that and talk about what we're doing in response.
But we could also use this, it seems to me, as a way to engage families more strongly. I mean, we are serious, we need your help, you know?
Okay, so, I just feel like there's so many questions, I also have a question about being a reader, just because you, it does say in the report that we, I mean, its strength was that we have research-backed, sound investments, strong investments in curriculum, one of which was not approved by the state level. So it doesn't, and you're saying it takes two to three years for a teacher to adopt a new instructional method or curriculum, so it seems like probably not the right call to suddenly switch to an interim plan while we wait for the state-approved. I mean, do you have an opinion on that?
Teachers are here, so. A couple of things, I think, go to the teachers, right? You want to ask the teachers, so I don't want to just say what all I know, but I think, like, the first thing is, when it impacts teachers directly, you need to get their voice in the room, right? And ask them, what do we, we have this, being a reader is now no longer approved, teachers, what are your recommendations? Right? Go to some of them to get their voices and perspectives. I do think there are small things, wins you can do, when it comes to implement curriculum, and so to kind of accelerate that process, and that is that if-then statement. So if you know you have a new curriculum and you want to accelerate the learning, what do you want to put in, in place to help that learning accelerate? Maybe add more coaches. Do you adjust principal walkthrough form? Do you provide more PD? Do you make PD where it is aligned to that curriculum, where that's the key driver of that? Like, this first year of PD is really around driving the curriculum. So there are things to do, but I would, I would recommend, like, and this is where this idea of like, go slow to go fast, go to the folks who are impacted most by this, by those decisions, right? And if you know curriculum impacts teachers directly, I would, I want to get their voices in that, in that, provide them the solution.
Okay, thank you.
I would just add to that, like, you know, it, it takes a thorough curriculum adoption process, will take a, a good year, in terms of like, engaging teachers to be a part of the decision, and families as well. I think over the next school year, you have to continue to support teachers around the being a reader curriculum. We cannot afford to have a year where reading instruction is up to individual decisions made by individual teachers. In classrooms, you have a curriculum that was thoughtfully selected, it happens to not be on the state list, and so you have to make a decision around another curriculum in the interim. We still need to support strong instructional practice in reading, and the curriculum that you have is a tool to leverage to do that.
And again, not to go over this point again, but, but if you have to use that curriculum for the year, I would then engage teachers and say, this is what we have to do for the next year.
Yes.
We know there's gaps. What are the gaps you, you are seeing? How do we solve these gaps together for the next year? Bring them in the conversation, and that may take a little bit longer, but they will then let you know, curriculum is strong here, weak here, let's add some resources here to fix this for the next year, and then you can continue with the next process for the following year.
Do you have any feedback on the school board level that you want to impart to us before you, you ride off? Hopefully you'll be back.
Again, like, really just applaud your energy and engagement in this process. I had an opportunity to speak with a number of you in one-on-one conversations to help inform these reports. I, I would just ask that you think about kind of your own continuous improvement cycle. And so, when you think about the reports that you're asking for, the data that you are reviewing, and the cycle with which that you are reviewing it, ensuring that it is also aligned to the theory of action. Because boards can ask questions that incent superintendents and leadership teams to double down on the most important work, or boards can ask questions that really kind of distract and have superintendents and leadership teams kind of chasing all kinds of different kind of questions and initiatives. And so, I would just encourage, like, to continue the level of focus that you have, and the level of alignment to the key priorities of this work.
Thank you both so much, this has been a great session, and I'm actually going to take, before we move on, I know we're running behind schedule, but you'll have to deal with it, because typically, we're very much on time. I just want to solidify our next step, since y'all are all here. I feel like later today, we're going to have a quick thing, but I feel like we should add probably some kind of work session around this, seeming to me, solidifying around the theory of change. Do y'all have any comments on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see a, another work, or not, this is, this was a presentation, a work session where we think about kind of digging into some pieces of the report, but also kind of having conversations with leadership about kind of what are those first next steps that we're going to, that they're going to do, and where they're going to need support, and where they're going to need funding.
Okay, and then Dr. Haas, I wish we had had this information before we did our instructional coach work session, because I feel like I would have had a lot, I feel like we all probably had some questions after that. Who was in my group, was it you, Judy? No, Ellen?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like we had a lot of questions that now, I'm almost feeling like I want to dive back into that. So I guess I'd ask you, Dr. Haas, what are the next steps that you're taking?
So the, the next steps that we've got in place right now, because we were concerned that as the school year ended, you know, tomorrow's a half-day, and then teacher's last day is on Monday, was we just wanted to be sure that we closed the loop on the report itself, and not, this isn't the most meaningful way to do it, but it's, it's just to, to close the loop for the year and get feedback from instructional staff. So we did ask Anson and Akeisha if they would work with us to make a video that we put together, that I introduced, and it provides a high-level summary of the report, so, and we've talked with all the principals about ensuring that every educator in their school sees the video before they head out, and there are poll questions on it to give us an initial blink of what they see as first steps, you know? How does the, how does the report resonate with their experience in the school system? And, and start to gain their, their input on it. So that's, that's the, the first step. I do agree that it, one of the, one of the goals in doing a process like this is it does create a whole different framework for how the board views everything after that, right? So, now, you don't just have the strategic plan that has the overarching goals where we say, this is our strategic plan, we also bring the bellwether report up every time we do something. How's this, how does this recommendation, how's this work session, how, how is this structure that we have in the school system, how does that reflect what we learned from the bellwether report? The theory of action probably is, just listening to Akeisha talk about that, has probably been the most impactful thing for me, because I think that there is, there is a, you, you look at the Gallup results, right? And you could see that gap, an engagement gap, from the upper leadership, and then to the principals, there's a gap, and then it really bottlenecked there, you know? And then it goes down to, you know, it goes from the, the division leaders to the associates. You can see that it's bottlenecking there. And, and what I, what I'm, what I've learned through this process is that it's because we don't define the action steps really below the principal or the director. We, we share, with the, you know, it's like, we, we shared, shared decision-making is, we made a decision, we shared it with you. So now you go share it with your instructional staff, go share it with the staff at your school, and then the expectation is that it would then happen. And we don't have adequate feedback loops in, either in the form of formative assessment or learning walks. Those structures are only now just things that we are just beginning to do. While school systems around the state, probably 20 years ago, were adopting these kinds of structures to respond to standardized testing. For, for better or for worse, they said standardized testing is not going away, we want our students to be successful with it, let's use best practices that were recommended by Rick Dufour, everybody with professional learning communities. Alamo County did not adopt these practices. Alamo County was hoping that standardized testing would go away, okay? So, lo and behold, here we are, here's where we are. Now, there, there is an ancient, there's an old expression that is, when's the best time to plant a tree? And the answer is 20 years ago. When's the next best time to plant a tree is now. Many, many of the things that Anson and Akeisha talked about are in the first-step phases that have been taking place over the last, really, trying to begin in 1819, but then vastly interrupted by the pandemic. You notice that we've been emphasizing have professional, having professional learning communities, having formative assessment. We have faced a lot of resistance from the school level in doing this work. But the reason for that, as I, again, as I'm unpacking this, is because we didn't adopt a theory of change, of who does, does what, to make sure that people need to know, or have what they need to know and be able to do, so that they can adequately embrace the change that we're asking them to make. Just saying to someone, change because it's the right thing to do, if they don't have the professional development to embrace that change, then it's very difficult for them to do that, and we should expect them to resist it, even if it's for the right reason. So, my big takeaways are that my staff, and I, I want to work with the board on this, because I feel like one of the other big changes that we've made over the past few years is that we work as a team, that it's not me running interference for the school system, so you don't really know what's going on, so we don't have to face up to the results that we're getting. I feel like we've all become more, become very transparent with each other, we work together, and you are in a leadership role, and I'm, I'm here to carry out what you want me to carry out. And I feel like you need information to do that, and that's why we do this work that we're doing right now. But the first step, I agree, is to, is to really adopt that theory of action and implement it for really the, the key things that we, that the board and staff work together to identify, and listen to the teachers, you know, getting that feedback from them, what are the key areas that we need to tackle first? Then say, well, if we're, if we're going to make this change, then what, who needs to do what all the way to the classroom? And then what is the teacher's role in making that change to the task at the, at the core of it? There also needs to be that feedback loop. Even this year, we adopted a learning walk in Alamo County when I came to the school system. It's always been an opt-in. You know, teachers are supposed to get five in the fall and five in the spring, there were those of us that practiced it with fidelity, and there were people that didn't, and up until this year, we didn't, you know, we didn't hold them accountable for it, especially during the pandemic, because, you know? So, we, it is compliance right now, because we're just basically saying, get out and do the learning walks, and do 10 a week, otherwise you have absolutely nothing to talk about. So, but that is a key, coming, what I picture with the theory of change is that, first is driving in one direction, and then you're getting the feedback from the other direction. The learning walk, the formative assessments, I know we get complaints, that people say we, we give too many assessments. I don't think we give enough. I think there are too many assessments, but there's too many low-quality assessments that don't measure standards. I think that we need to have teams work at teachers, at the grade levels, they need to make They need to make the assessments. I don't think we should be make and handing out assessments. That doesn't build assessment literacy for teachers. I think they need to make them. But they need to be given and they need to be given with fidelity across the system so we have that feedback loop coming back up so we can see what's going on. So I do, I think next steps, make sure everybody knows about it. I do think every teacher in our school system, every educator should have at least a one-hour module next year, either in person or asynchronously or, or synchronous online to unpack this report and actually understand it. Otherwise, having been a teacher myself, if, if someone says, do you want to come learn about the bellwether report or do you want to get your classroom ready for school? I'm going to go get my classroom ready for school. We need to put this in front of people and ensure that they know about it. Otherwise, they cannot participate in it. They cannot help us with this mission. That's, that's part of that theory of action. So the first step, awareness across the board that this happened, we're, we're moving forward with it. And then I really want to engage the board around theory of action. Are we going to go broad with one strategy or are we going to go after schools that are really treading water and do a pilot? Those are things that I need direction on in, in terms of where we're going to take that support. But I fully embrace everything I read. It all resonates with me. There's, I, I feel affirmed by the report and I'm glad to hear an outside consultant say the things that you've said because I feel like it's going to empower my administration to, to make the changes that we think need to be made. So I really appreciate it.
If I could, I know you said this would take a couple of years, but I have a question for you, Dr. Haas, or maybe Dr. McLaughlin, about the math running this. I mean, we have a lot of rising eighth graders that are going to be starting in the fall and I would love to have some data on the demographic breakdown in terms of what students are signed up for Algebra I, whether we can talk with the families about the importance of taking Algebra I and if we need to provide some intervention. I know it's late in the year, but if we need to provide some intervention or workshops to get kids interested in that, I would be very much in favor of that.
I completely agree. And I don't think you're out of line by suggesting that. The, the families that have their children signing up for Algebra I in high school, they will respond very positively to us reaching out and saying, hey, your child's taking Algebra I next year. We've developed, you know, a two-week program that's toward the end of July that your child can participate in, and I guarantee you will have a very high response rate.
Well, I would be reaching out to the parents who didn't, their kids didn't sign up also and encouraging them to sign up.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
That's what I meant.
They would be thrilled about that. But I'm also thinking the real, the, the areas where we have the greatest difficulty with the success in Algebra I is in ninth grade. To your point about students signing up for Algebra I, again, that's, we have schools that do summer programs around that, but it's been like, are you going to do one? Are you not going to do one?
Right. This is why you should do one, is what we should be saying.
Yeah.
I just wanted to respond also, one thing I know, Katrina, we're really late and you all have to go back home, I know. But one thing, and you were in alignment on a lot of things, just one thing that caught me about what you said about how, you know, coming back to meetings, how does this align to the bellwether report? How does this align to our strategic plan? I think that that still feels to me too passive. This feels like we now know that our house is on a fire. And so that still feels like, you know, just spraying a little water at it. I really, I think that we really need to be driving action with this and not just, sometimes I feel like with our strategic plan.
You back into it.
In a parallel path and we're like, okay, well, we're doing this thing and here's why we think it aligns with our strategic plan, instead of really coming from the strategic plan, instead of really coming from this report.
We back, you back into it. We say, okay, well, we're going to do this, so how's it relate to the?
Exactly, exactly. And I think, I don't like it when we do it with a strategic plan and I really do not like it when we do it with this. So this really has to drive all of our action.
All the, the recommendations that are in here are recommendations that we are going to enact.
Okay. What's floating around my head, it's so hard. I know this is a, it's a good conversation. Thank you guys. I just, I've been recalling and I want to say it too now, is that I did that PD back in 20, which by the way, for a school board evaluation, we should all be making sure we get PD in. But that PD where it was a school system in North Carolina that just took out the equation of systemic racism sort of by, we can't really ever take it out, by, but by saying, they made their kids take the P, all had to take the PSAT and anyone that scored above a certain amount, which was, they had to take Algebra. And then they got the supports they need. It was just no opt-in, no talk to, it was just you can do it, so get in it. So anyway, I'd love to see more like proactive.
The school board can mandate whatever you want. You could say all.
Yeah, and then they had this amazing success story.
All those students will take Algebra I. You could say that if you chose to.
It's, it's, I'm, I'm all for it. I'm looking forward to doing the work. This is not the time to throw in random new suggestions, but I'm really excited about having this conversation. Thank you guys for leading it. Thank you for opening it up. And I'm really looking forward to all the work that we're going to do.
Thank you.
And then I would also like to note to our student reps, we are well behind schedule, which we have not done before. So if you need to leave, you are absolutely welcome to do so.
And you can just flip out too.
Yeah, you don't have to, you don't have to decide, but if you need to leave truly, I mean, you saw, I went and picked up a coffee from the back. You can, you can, you can head out if you need to. So we are, just get through my papers here, moving, I believe we have a report.
Equity updates.
Equity updates. I'm assuming Dr. Hairston's going to come give that report?
Good evening, Chair Carlson, School Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update from the Office for Community Engagement. The mission of the Office for Community Engagement is to inform, inspire, and involve a broad spectrum of stakeholders in collaborative partnerships that empower students, staff, families, communities, and encourage lifelong learning. Through the development and implementation of the Anti-Racism Policy, ACC, and the Policy on the Treatment of Transgender and Gender Expansive Students, JBA, our school division strives to become anti-racist and anti-biased, rejecting all forms of racism as destructive to our mission, vision, and goals. Our office works to create an inclusive environment that recognizes the power of diversity in driving positive student outcomes. Diversity makes us stronger through a variety of perspectives, backgrounds, and experiences that improves our educational environment and gives rise to new ways of thinking and innovation to better serve all school communities. The Anti-Racism Policy and the Policy on the Treatment of Transgender and Gender Expansive Students are firmly embedded within the Strategic Plan: Learning for All. With both policies at the heart of everything we do in the division, I am confident that working collaboratively as a team, we will end the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities for our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. We seek to build relationships with families and communities to ensure that every student succeed. We will know every student in ACPS. This evening, you will hear from Dr. Eric Irazere, Director of Equity, School, Family, and Community Relations, and Project Manager for the Anti-Racism Policy, and Ms. Ayanna Mitchell, Director of Equity Education and Project Manager for the Policy on the Treatment of Transgender and Gender Expansive Students. Dr. Irazere and Ms. Mitchell will provide updates from their respective steering committee. Each committee is comprised of staff members from schools, departments, and division leadership. The steering committee serves as oversight to the implementation of the policy, and both are tasked with carrying out set deliverables. After the presentation, I will close with next steps for the upcoming school year. But now I'm turning it over to Dr. Irazere, Director of Equity, School, Family, and Community Relations.
Thank you. As always, we, as Dr. Kaiser said, we start with our strategic plan in mind. You'll see that these strategies are interwoven into our three goals, allowing students to explore their interests, eliminate barriers to access with Goal One, empowering our students and families to have more choices and input in their student's trajectory, and also ensuring that programs like our CLCs are accessible to all students across the division.
Good evening. So in July 1993, the school board made its initial commitment to ensure equitable outcomes for all students. Since then, its past policies, JB, IGAK, ACC, and most recently, Policy JBA. These policies remind us and guide us to continue the mission of ending the predictive value of race, gender, and special capacities to ensure that all students are going to succeed. As you can imagine, the Anti-Racism Policy, Policy ACC, that came along was the guiding factor of how we are going to, how we've been looking at our treatment of transgender and gender expansive students' policy. We spend most of our time collaborating and working together to be an anti-biased, anti-racist school division. So even tonight, you'll notice that most of the conversation talks about being an anti-biased, anti-racist school division with specifics around what's happening within each policy. And for some reason, I can't quite see what's under there, but hopefully you can on your screen. Some of the examples for that is that we have redeveloped the decision-making tool, the Anti-Racism Decision-Making Tool, to be an anti-biased, anti-racist decision-making tool, to ensure that no matter what the circumstance is, we're able to use the same tool to systematize how we go about doing that. And we also use the Learning Resource Vetting Tool to really think about, as we were developing and updating our Learning Resource Tool in the Department of Instruction, to include anti-biased, anti-racist practices. So that's just a couple of examples of how that works, but most of our teams overlap, most of our work overlaps. And as you know, I'm the yin and he's the yang, so everything overlaps when it comes to this work.
So the, I'm going to switch to the specific update to the Anti-Racism Policy. And in, it's always important to acknowledge the work that's been done to develop this policy. The policy was adopted by the school board in February of 2019. And before that, great effort went into getting student input, getting staff input to form this, to form this policy. In 1920, the development of the internal structure, project manager and subcommittees were put in place. On, in 2021, foundational training, trainings were put into place with racial consciousness, for example, critical conversations about race and anti-racism orientation. In 2021, the policy was further developed in strengthening the, the capacity of schools and department leaders to address acts of racism. That's where the Anti-Racism Decision-Making Tool came, came into fruition. This year, again, as this policy is, I'm sorry. Oh, there's a button. All right. Awesome. As this policy has continued to develop, this year, we've developed new, new tools and updated our existing tools to focus on Abar, and you'll hear Abar a lot, and expanding our anti-racial, anti-racist awareness in our community. We've had a big team. There is a lot of overlap. And these do not, the names here do not include all of the folks in the field that have helped us with a lot of this process and a lot of these tools. But you see, it's a very, it's a broad group and from a lot of different levels. We've tried to stay within the three areas of focus for the Anti-Racism Policy, and they've been fairly consistent over the past two years due to the nature of the projects this year. First is curriculum and professional learning. So professional learning on new and updated curriculum and decision-making tools, supporting the science framework, we'll get into that a little bit here in a little bit, ensuring books and materials have diverse representation. Looking at intentional community engagement, that's disaggregating our panorama and Gallup data from employees, our student surveys by demographics, conducting our listening forums and listening sessions, our community information sessions as well, and it, and really working hard to identify and promote strategies and resources to tackle some of the existing gaps that were highlighted by the bellwether audit. Also, reporting acts of racism. Again, institutionalizing the use of the Anti-Racism, Anti-Biased Decision-Making Tool and using an internal code to track school instances of racism. And with that, we need to provide more training to administrators on how to document and address those acts of racism when they do occur. So this year has been very project-focused and the idea was to look at tangible items that we could get done by the end of the year. So one of those, and one of the first ones, was making sure that the Anti-Racism Orientation was fully integrated into the HR onboarding system. The second, and you'll hear this in, in both presentations, is the, the development of the Anti-Racist, Anti-Biased, or Abar Decision-Making Tool. We wanted to make sure that our work in this field was not only happening internally, but with our external stakeholders as well. So we continued through open doors programs and one-to-one trainings with some of our community organizations like the Seaville Clergy Collective, really explaining the work that we're doing around anti-racism here in the county. Also, the Abar Learning Resource Forum, there has been a resource forum in our school division for a while, but we worked with the Department of Instruction, again, a lot of our folks overlap, and developed an Abar tool that includes anti-racist, anti-biased component in that tool. So when we make sure we're about vetting our new curriculum books, we're looking for representation. We're making sure that those books are books or curriculum that our students can see themselves in. Also, this year, we've worked on expansion of, of the Abar lens into science. And the team developed a proposal for Abar and curricula, culturally responsive practices to be infused into science, very similar to the reframing the narrative that, that you all passed last month. And the last is the anonymous reporting and referrals. We do see that there are some disconnects between what administrators are reporting and how they're reporting it. And it's not necessarily that they're not reporting, it's going into detail so we can track at our level the number of incidences related to race. The Anti-Biased, or Abar Decision-Making Tool was redesigned this year to allow for better accessibility across schools and departments. We've worked with the HR department to do a training, also technology, and principals. We've included the anti-biased component in order to facilitate broader use. So as we knew that Policy JBA was going to get into motion this year, we wanted to make sure that these tools were accessible to, to everybody, to make sure these tools were usable by, by folks in any situation that, that occurs. So we developed a training video and a presentation to accompany the face-to-face training sessions for the Anti-Racism Decision-Making Tool. And again, the Abar Curriculum Tool, the Learning Resource Vetting Tool, it was designed to provide greater access to relevant rigorous learning resources for our teachers and our students and ensure students have a, of different cultures and races can see and be seen in the, in the instructional materials. So for next year, there are two major projects that we want to start with and move forward. And one of those is the expansion of the Abar lens into, into our science curriculum. And second is taking a deep dive into the anonymous reporting and that link between the anonymous reporting and school referrals inside the building. So we're working across departments to develop a training module for administrators and staff on how to effectively report and analyze that data as it comes in.
Thank you, Eric. Yay. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the beginnings of the work for the policy you passed in 2021, the treatment of transgender, gender expansive.
policy you passed in 2021, the treatment of transgender, gender expansive students. This policy is intended to help schools ensure the educational and social integration of transgender and gender expansive students to keep their learning environment safe from discrimination and harassment. This student-led policy group determined five major goals. One was to support students in all aspects of school life. Two was to respect the rights of students to keep their identity and transgender status private and confidential. Three, to assist in eliminating ways in which gender expansive students are stigmatized and marginalized. Four, to foster social and school-community integration and make it inclusive for all students. And five is to provide consistent support and training for ACPS administrators and staff that enables them to address matters of students, student gender identity and expression in a consistent manner. You'll notice that as we go through these slides, they align to these goals intentionally in order to meet these goals for our students. The policy was adopted in August 2021. That year, we went after a few small areas, and we started the Abar work that you heard Eric talk about just before. We added this specific policy to the OCH training, which is part of HR, which is similar to the way we added the Anti-Racism Policy work there as well. We hosted a webinar introducing the policy to the general public. Building Services took the lead in planning for inclusive bathrooms in new construction because we know that all students benefit from gender-neutral bathrooms, because when we gotta go, we just gotta go. Some schools started to, started to engage with an organization called Side by Side, who offers professional learning across the state about transgender issues. Secondary principals and students reviewed the dress code and the student handbooks and made recommendations in conjunction with the updates that were necessary for this year's handbook, and used that across the division. And just last Thursday, we hosted a community information session where we hosted over 100 participants, where they were able to, we were able to discuss the next steps associated with the policy, and share that with, share community resources with our community, and tell them about the training we will be doing with Side by Side, along with the training resources available to them through UVA Safe Space Training. Again, you'll notice that our policy is comprised of a diverse group of individuals. Everybody from teachers, students, division, and school leaders were part of this year's steering committee. Together, we identified four main deliverables that directly aligned with the goals of this policy. Sarah Jackson, who is a teacher at Meriwether Lewis, took the lead as our Chair of the Training and Professional Development Team. Kimberly Gibson, who you heard about earlier, worked on our vetting tool, and she works on both committees, and so does that group, they work in both the Anti-Racism Policy Committee and ours. Megan Washburn, who is an Equity Specialist, took the lead on the Empowering Student Voice and Advocacy Group, and Jamie Gelner took the lead on our Student Support and Student Planning Guide. Each subcommittee, committee spent the year doing research and planning toward implementation at the onset of the 23-24 school year. They are all very proud of the work they have done, and they are looking forward to moving into the new year for implementation. Our training and professional development will be offered through Side by Side, which is an organization that's dedicated to creating supportive communities for LGBTQ plus youth. They will be designing professional learning that will be rolled out based on what every educator needs to know, understand, and do to ensure a safe, inclusive environment for all of our students. There will be a work team that will be specifically working on a policy module that will be shared going into the next school year on what exactly is the policy, JBA, and what is the implementation around that. Our Student Support and School Planning Guide team created a draft guidance, draft document for guidance counselors, school counselors, to be able to use a checklist that's directly associated with what is in policy JBA, to clarify what educators need to do to support students, support staff, and support families, and when they need to communicate, and how they need to communicate with families about what is happening with their child. The Empowering Student Voice and Advocacy Group has the goal for ensuring that all middle school and high schools have functioning supportive GSAs and affinity clubs for students. So by doing that, they established that every secondary school does have a GSA, but they also were thinking about how to create affinity groups for students, how to provide continuous check-ins and checkpoints to support the sponsors and provide them with professional learning. They also are looking to work with the student who is on our team to provide a GSA Club Summit this next spring, and it will be the first of our school division. Thank you.
I'm keeping with the goals of our equity policies, keeping those in the forefront of everything we do helps us to continue moving towards being an anti-racist, anti-bias school division. The policy implementation work will help drive our efforts to ensure safe and empowering learning environments for all of our students. Moving forward for the upcoming school year, we will provide professional development on the updated Abar curriculum and tools, as well as specific policy and support to staff pertaining to JBA. We'll implement the support plan and the checklist for school counselors to utilize with JBA, and we'll continue to support our GSA sponsors through professional development and hosting our first GSA Student Summit. And then we will continue to use the Abar tool with the science curriculum framework. These are a few of the identified initiatives that our team will work on next school year. We look forward to coming back to the school board with an update on progress. And we will now take questions, if you have questions.
I always have questions. I don't know, I think it was you, Dr. Irazere, that mentioned the anonymous phone line. I know we as a school board implemented that several years ago, maybe four or five years ago. We've never really had a report on it, but I, I sense from what you said that it's underutilized or underreported, or, I mean, is it, is it limited to, I mean, I noticed also in the Bellwether Report, there were a lot of, there were comments about, or reports about microaggressions, a lot of racial nonsense going on in schools. I hope it's not limited to that, I hope it's more anti-bias, but talk to me about it, talk to us about it.
I can't speak to the details of the actual reporting tool. What I was speaking to was the disconnect between, when we looked at the data on how many acts of racism were reported through the anonymous reporting tool, it didn't align with, there's a subcategory when principals put in a referral. Acts of racism aren't a reportable category, so the tech department has put in an extra step to track that, that data. And what we saw was, we saw a disconnect, there was 35, I don't want to speak to the exact number, but there was a disconnect between, there were a larger number of anonymous reports of racism than there were, that were verified, that were not recorded in Power School for us to pull that data, so there was a misalignment there. So I don't think it's, yeah, for discipline, so I don't think it's a lack of using the tool or underutilization of the tool, it's trying to connect those two, you know, those two systems, so we can look at, you know, trends, you know, are there trends at schools at different levels, so it's trying to get useful data out of those two tools.
Right, I guess I was really focused on how do we let people know they should use this tool, and what is the magnitude of reporting that we actually see, and is there variability between schools, I mean, sort of, you know, understandable data for me.
Yeah, that's a, that's a different department, but I can get that data for you or work with that team.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question about how the Abar tool is going to be used in the science curriculum, how, what will be some things that'll happen there?
That's looking at, when we're looking at, it's not the Abar tool necessarily, it's using that Abar lens, that anti-racist, anti-bias lens, so it's taking a look, working with teachers is the proposal, to bring the experts into the room to figure out how can we make that science curriculum, you know, more accessible and reflect our, our diversity among our students, so getting them engaged in that work, very similar to reframing the narrative. You know, when students see themselves and they're actively engaged in inquiry-based learning, we see a higher engagement with students, and applying that to science in a very similar way was where the committee wanted to go with that work.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I appreciated this update. One question I had was just, the report, you know, Policy ACC had a whole bunch of metrics, I remember there were also a lot about student achievement, gifted identification, those, those types of things, an annual report about disparities that still exist, and my apologies if I'm missing when that was part of the discussion, but I would love more integration if possible with like that Bellwether Report and with that academic and achievement side tied in with the Anti-Racism Policy, because that was part of that work, if that makes sense? Although I'm still very happy to hear about all of this, which also, like, the, the reporting tool, absolutely, we get emails pretty frequently, actually, that allege racially motivated incidents that I don't think we have a good handle on, so I appreciate this work, but just that would be my push for the next year is diving into some of those other, for the next year's report, diving into some of those other areas that the policy touches on.
We would be happy to do that.
Yes. Okay, do we have any other questions? I feel like I've kept everyone way too long. Debbie, you had to work for that last meeting. Thank you so much for this work, thank you for sticking around, I'm sorry that it went beyond schedule, I know that's not really fair to you either, because then we're all pretty tired by the time you're giving a presentation that I'm sure you spent a lot of time working on, so my apologies, we will follow up if we have questions more. Thank you for coming back to us twice, and all of the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to other business. We were going to have a short little talk about our school board working documents, I'm going to push that until a future meeting because it is non, it's not necessary right now, I'll just remind the board members that Judy and I will be meeting tomorrow to kind of map out the remainder of our meeting, so if you have any other feedback, send it to us by email or in the working documents by tomorrow. I saw that many of you filled it in with more detail, so thank you for doing that.
By 10:00 AM.
By 10:00 AM, do it by 10:00 AM if you want to have a say in that, or give us a call. Is there any other business?
We should note that we do not have closed session, we don't have another meeting, I think, until July 13th.
We do not have another meeting until July 13th, there is no more, there's not another meeting this month. Congratulations to all of our graduates, everyone who's moving into summer vacation. Kayden, enjoy your summer as well, yes. Teachers, thank you for everything you've done, and I think it's, I feel a lot of excitement about what's in store, so thank you all, and we will be back in July.